Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Before we start our meeting, I'd like to ask Pastor Jack Morantz from the Word of Life Church to come forward for our opening invocation. Pastor?
Mayor, Councilman. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening and we are asking you, oh God, to bless this meeting we're having tonight, Lord. We ask you also to bless our mayor and city council members, Lord, and help them, oh God, to make the right decisions in all the matters that come up today, Lord. We ask you also, Lord, to bless this crowd gathered here tonight, Lord, and, oh God, to bless our fire departments and our police department, Lord, and all the emergency personnel, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for having this beautiful city, Lord, of Los Banas, Lord, and we ask you to bless it, Lord, and continue, Lord, to let it grow and prosper, Lord, and we ask this in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you very much. We call this meeting to order for May 21st, 2025. Chief, we have the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands our nation under God in this world, the great justice for all.
Thank you. We have roll call, please. Lucy?
I'll do roll call.
Let's see. Marcus Chavez, he has a commitment tonight and he will not be present at this meeting. He warned us in advance. Evan Sanders?
Yep.
Deborah Lewis?
Yeah.
And I am here, Michael Amigho. Go on to item four, consideration of approval agenda. Staff is requesting that item seven H, City Council Resolution Number 6933, approving memorandum of understanding between the City of Los Banas and Grasslands Water District regarding cooperative efforts to implement a recharge basin and stormwater capture project be removed from the consent agenda and presented as a separate agenda item after the consent agenda. So that is what staff is asking for. Is there any other item?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item G for a simple question.
Okay. And then we'll pull seven H.
Mayor, is H going to go on the regular agenda tonight?
Yes, so we'll need that. We'll need that motion in approval of the consent agenda. But first, we have some presentations, and so with that... I'll go down to... Oh, we'll vote when I get back out my new presentation first. So we want to recognize the departments and also the employees that make up this city because it really makes all of our jobs and our citizens' jobs easier to live and work within our city. That's really what it's all about. So this week, we're proclaiming we're recognizing Public Works Week, where as the Public Works Professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital to importance to sustainability and our community, public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Los Banas. These infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works Professionals who are federally mandated first responders and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, airports, parks, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. It is in the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Los Banas to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works first responders and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the City of Los Banas do hereby recognize week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week in the City of Los Banas and urge all citizens to join the activities, events, ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our Public Works Professionals, engineers, managers, and employees. I'd like to thank you very much, and also Chuck, you might have stepped forward too. See if you were... Chuck is Public Works Director and our engineer.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The Public Works Week is to honor those who work in the streets, in the sewers, the water system, the treatment plant. So Carlos and his whole crew here work very hard all day long, in fact, 24 hours a day that are on watch to keep the city infrastructure going and operating, and so we're glad to get recognized. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council.
Now, we have a retirement Gregory Lever, and Gregory has already left for New York, so I cannot hand him this proclamation, but he was with the cities since October 2003, and he retired utility maintenance worker number two, and he retired, let's see, on... Well, just last, this month, I guess, he retired. So I want to proclaim that the mayor and the city council members of the City of Los Banas do hereby commend Gregory Lever on his dedication, loyalty to the City of Los Banas, and congratulate him on his retirement. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation will be presented to Gregory at... I guess we'll mail it now.
Yes.
Because it's not going to be a city council meeting. So we'll mail him his proclamation, and we really can't thank him enough for his dedication to our city for all those years. So if you know Gregory, send him a big thank you our way. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go back to our approval or consent agenda and have that motion removing those two items that were talked about, seven G and seven H for further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I suppose I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, pulling items G and H.
Mayor, if I may.
Um, so the direction from staff was just to remove item seven H with the approval of the normal agenda, and then do the public forum, and then after public forum, then we'll approve the consent agenda without item H, and then I'll read everything, and then that's when Deborah pulls item G.
So you can't be in that motion right now?
Um, have we done public forum yet?
No.
Yeah. So all, so item four was just to approve the agenda, which is removing, which is removing item H from the consent agenda and making it a normal item.
Okay.
And then we would approve the agenda as amended, and then you did your presentations, and now we're going to do the public hearing.
Okay, so I thought we would approve the consent agenda up here since it said approval agenda, you know, so I thought we were going to approve that at the same time, but that works too.
Okay.
So then I just need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
As amended.
As amended, excuse me.
And Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda, putting item H on the regular agenda and to pull item seven G for discussion.
Okay. A second? Okay, we have a second, as stated. Any further questions or comments? I hear in a favor signified by saying aye. I have a has it, and we will move on. And Evan's first motion did not pass for lack of a second. Okay, now we'll move on to public forum. Members of the public may address this city council on any item that's within the interest of this jurisdiction of our city council. You have five minutes to speak, and we welcome you to come forward and speak to us at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Brian Swanson. Tonight I'm representing the Firefighters Burn Institute, and we're here to acknowledge the efforts of Los Bano City and Reseda County CAL FIRE on their recent fundraising effort with the fill the boot. A little bit of history, you've got a long connection with the Firefighter Burn Institute. In the last 20 years, that since 2005, they've managed to raise about $125,000 for the Burn Institute for their good works. This year was no different. I think it was about $9,600 is what was raised, so big money. And for the Burn Institute, they do a lot of fundraising efforts on their own, but the boot drives probably account for 50% of their budget from one year to the next, so it's critically important that the local agencies do what they're doing, and really, they don't need to have the work if it wasn't for the fire departments putting this together. So I commend the council and the community as well because that's who puts money in the boots. So it's always great, I know it's great for you guys to see the community step up. It's a huge effort. So I have a couple of plaques to acknowledge. So for Los Bano's Fire Department, thank you very much. And hope continue the good work. And Reseda County CAL FIRE, again, thank you.
Thank you.
And hopefully maybe we'll see you here next year.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. I'm a little late with this. I should have been here at the last meeting regarding the PIBB, but I missed the meeting, but I wanted to give my opinion, wanted to make it known. My name's Mark Duties. I'm representing the hot fellows regarding our assessment of the PIBB. Our assessment is $82,000 over the 10-year period. $35,000 is just for one parcel that has a parking lot on it, no other structures. I had concern about how the petition segment of the PIBB progressed. The petition required 50% of the total assessment square footage. When the petition was brought before the council on June 5th last year, it acquired The city considered their vote to include the city parcels. A just vote would bring it to a total of 50.8%, bringing the petition to ballot. The council asked itself, asked, why would it want to tax itself? The staff replied that the city prior to the PIBB was spending far more than the $29,000 tax, taking care of general services, and that the PIBB would then be responsible for their services, the landscape, tree trimming, benches, sidewalk cleaning, and so on. In essence, the city was shifting those costs of the maintenance to the PIBB. In further research, I discovered that three parcels voted for the petition, but then voted no when it went to ballot. Definitely conflict. Four others that signed the petition didn't turn into a ballot at all. I investigated this further, but that's another story that I don't want to take the time with now. I'm concerned about now. We've collected over the last five years, $750,000 in assessments. Where did that go? The CEFS document says it'll provide services above and beyond those provided by the city, Los Banos, and government agencies. The PIBB is to provide improvements to special benefits to those assessment parcels. Under special benefits, I see 30 planters that cost $51,000, trash receptacles, $24,000, and security cameras, $18,000, and benches estimate around $25,000. I don't see $750,000 spent to revitalize the downtown. I understand that the city has required the Downtown Association to conduct an audit for that period. Thank you for that. I notice this will be paid for by the PIBB account as well. Now, Bruger and Company, the CPA, is the CPA for the Downtown Association. We've yet to see any reports. In 2024, the Downtown Association paid the CPA $14,754.45. From my accounting reviewing journal, it shows that in 2024, they wrote a total of 65 checks. That's a lot of money to account for. It pains me to think that the PIBB funds may also be paying for the citywide fireworks show and seeing our assessments go up in smoke. We want to revitalize the downtown, and I'm all for that. In the meantime, I place my faith in the city's oversight on a month-to-month operation of the funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else, please come forward. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Anna McCauley, almost a 30-year resident. I'm going to speak to you on several subjects tonight. The first one is the traffic light at Mercy Springs and Pacheco. When you're coming in from the south, because Save Mart is on one side, Bright Aid's on another, there's a very short place for cars to stack up going left. And what happens is if you've got cars already stacked up in two lanes, in the lanes going north, in the straight lanes, and/or big trucks like we always have, and then now we'll have vegetable trucks, the cars that need to get in the left lane cannot. The light has turned green for the people going left. Maybe two or three cars get through there, but not everybody that intended to be in that lane. What I would like to see, and maybe you can address this with Caltrans, is that when that left turn light is turned on, it also should turn on the green going north. This way, we'll get all the traffic moving, people that intend to go left that couldn't get in that short egress area will be able to get there. And then, you know, giving it plenty of time, then, you know, that left turn lane can be shut off. But I think initially it needs to be left on so that there's enough cars that can get through there. I live in that area, and I see it all the time, and it's just exasperating because... And then also you have cars that are going in the straight lane. Now, there could be space for them to squeeze in, but a lot of these cars park right smack in that lane, and there's no room for anybody to squeeze in. And when we get in that lane going north, we move to the right of it to give people access, you know, if it's, if they're parked where they can get through. So that's one thing. And then I think, oh, but I'm also noticing something just very recently, and I thought this was very strange. You know, that light works very well. A lot of times, anybody that's in that left lane, it stays green until we get through. I've been through there a couple of times last week, and this week, only two or three cars got through, and there were still some more of us stacked up, and we could have been through there. So I don't know what's going on with that. I found that very strange because I've never seen that before, and I always thought that the cameras monitored fairly well. Anyway, so, but here's the other item, and this is distressing. It's our homeless mess. You've got a picturesque screen scene right next to a state-of-the-art police department. How beautiful does that look in this town? You know, I look at, I think about realtors. You want out-of-towners to buy here? You want them to build here? You want them to live here? You ought to show them that beautiful arch, go down Sixth Street to the plaza, and then, by the way, before you leave out of town or take them back to the office, send them over to the police department, show how beautiful that is. We've got a nice courthouse, and then we've got this picturesque scene with the homeless. Now, I don't, our governor, as far as I'm concerned, he's corrupt as they come. He says everything. Now he's saying he wants the cities to clean up the homelessness. Okay, I don't know what that means because 25 billion was spent and nothing happened, and who knows who got the money? Well, I would say if he said, "Clean it up, get it done," I'm looking at all of you and whoever fills that other seat when it's filled. This needs to get cleaned up. I was up in Grants Pass, I mentioned this at the dais last year. I was, we spent about 10 days up there. We've been through there many times. They've got a beautiful homeless and sheltered area. You could eat off their floors. They are so clean, and if you don't keep your stuff contained and looking good, you're out of there. But you know what? You can't hang out anywhere else in the city. You're, it just isn't allowed. They put, they don't put up with it. So I think that we need to get rid of that trash, and who allows them to bring all this stuff in? I don't understand it. You know, they, I mean, they've got collection. Not one of them could be qualified in a tiny home because look at the mess they have right now. How could they qualify for the living standards that they would be expected to maintain? So I think this needs to get fixed, and I'd like to see something happen. I have yet to meet anybody that doesn't agree with me, and I think y'all should be embarrassed. I can't believe, I mean, it gets cleaned up, and then it's back to whatever it's going to be, and people or businesses are complaining about human feces in front of their businesses, behind their businesses. Who's policing this stuff? I don't understand it, but hopefully we'll see some improvement. Thank you.
Thank you for being so direct, Ann. Anyone else, please come forward.
This is maybe the sixth time I've come to the council in my 30 years here in Los Banas. My name is John Fulton. I've been here since the early 1990s. When I first got here, I would commute to work by bicycle. So I was on the MCAG Transportation Committee. I spoke to the council and said, "You're wasting money." So at that particular time, I was from the government. I was here to help you from the government. I'm no longer with the government, but I'm here to help you. So I want to help make Los Bano safer. I want to make it easier and cheaper for you to do that. Bicycle paths, bicycle roads, bicycle lanes are different classes of bikeways. A bike lane is specified in the manual and uniform traffic control devices in Caltrans, the California Vehicle Code. If you measure the width of a bike lane, we don't meet that standard. We don't meet that standard from 1992. 12 years ago, that standard changed. Three feet was added to that. So we ran it to six feet, now we're talking about nine feet, and I've measured the width at 32 inches. 32 inches is nowhere near nine feet. So to make it safer, we don't want to mark places for bicycles to go that are unsafe, that have slotted drains, that are bicycle tracks. So if you're traveling in a direction that's parallel with the slotted drains, that slot becomes a lethal... becomes a lethal death trap for a bicycle. The bicycle wheel drops in, bike stops, and the rider keeps going. So the rider lands on his head, oftentimes lethal. We've had two people die since the first time I spoke here on Highway 152. They were just waiting to cross. So we're looking at, how do you cross 152? I was told by a prior mayor, we don't want bicycles. Bicycles do not belong on Highway 152. I went to the city engineer at the time and said, "All we need to do is change the configuration of the induction loop from a rectangle to a parallelogram." The induction loop then would sense the bicycle. So it's a very simple, no-cost fix. As you're repaving, you just change the configuration of the induction loop. On Fourth Street, at K Street, there is a symmetrical drain. Some of the symmetrical ones are round, some are squares. Lifting it up, turning it 90 degrees, solves the problem. No cost. We can also save money by not posting unsafe bike lanes that go into a ditch. They don't connect, as a bike plan requires, commuters from residences to businesses to schools. We don't have any of those. So if you're going to have one bike lane going one direction, you need to return one on the other direction. We don't have those either. So I've handed out a sheet with my phone number. If you have any questions, I'd love to serve the community, and I'll make it safer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City staff, and my fellow residents. I don't need to read it. Earlier this week, several days ago, as you know, we had a tragic event happen over at the homeless encampment. The police department put a, quickly put out a public notice on it, gave a general description of the series of events, actions taken. And I have every confidence in our police chief and our police department to investigate this thoroughly without any bias. The issue is the series of events which led to the conditions on the ground, as we used to call it. In my opinion, the public, the city council, city as a whole, could benefit from a public forum, public town hall meeting, or possibly host a homeless seminar with surrounding cities. Turlock has a pretty good program. Other cities have a pretty good program. But we've got to do something to continue the status quo. Doesn't help the folks at the encampment, doesn't help the businesses at the encampment, and doesn't help the residents, and it doesn't help our business community to attract more investors here. So again, we've got to do more. The status quo is unacceptable. So I look forward to some kind of interaction, discussion, I continue again, with the public so that we can, as a whole, contribute ideas to finding a better resolution for this situation. Because again, these things are going to continue to happen. They're draining our resources. Fire department responds. As you know, those tires on those vehicles, those large vehicles are very expensive. They wear out very quickly. The fuel costs are tremendous, and the stress turnaround for these fire department personnel, the toxic, toxic smoke that comes from these fires. And again, I don't have any proof, but from what I understand, it was a fire that had some weapons ammunition. I hope that we have some clarity on that. Again, people in there, in these encampments are being victimized. There is a semblance of organized crime that is extorting people and causing a lot of destruction. Again, I had the opportunity and privilege to serve overseas, and encampments that I had for instances of war were 10 times more humane and sanitary than what we have here for our fellow residents. So please, I look forward to some action. Speaking of fire stations, would like an update as to where we are with the fire station that's scheduled to go up by Ward Road, by the water tank. I understand there's $5 million standing there, and I know we're using some of that income or interest for other expenses, but the longer we wait on commencing construction of that, the higher is, you know, the cost, unless we're able to build with that. So hopefully, we can get going on that and have some kind of report as to where we are in the process of building that fire station, because all the residents south of Pacheco have basically no fire coverage. To the east of Mercy Springs, they have no fire coverage. So we are overdue on having that fire station there. And again, that's a great strain on our men and women who respond to these fires. And this is again, just part of the overlay transparency. Recently had a trip to Washington, D.C. I'd like to know what was the, what did we hope to accomplish from that? What has been accomplished and what, again, is the benefit to the city of sending and spending taxpayer money to these trips to Washington, D.C.? And why can't we have meetings with our local representatives here, which is, that's our form of government, have our congressmen or senators here to speak within her locally so that we don't have to have these expenses? So hopefully, we get some clarity on that as well. Another issue is, something that's gotten worse, is our stray animal, stray dog issues. What I'd like to see is maybe a partnership with our school district to have an education period, have our code enforcement squad, especially at the elementary level, teaching the responsibilities and care of animals, teaching them about not only the care of the actual animal itself, but about the upkeep of the fencing, of the locks, and how it is a living, breathing creature that, once you take that creature, it's for life, you know, barring unforeseen circumstances. That would help a lot, preventing neutering, spaying, not just for dogs, but for cats as well. Lastly, I'd like to talk about Independence Day. Arguably, it's one of the most important days in the founding of our republic, and I'd like to see it celebrated on Independence Day, the 4th of July. It would provide a reason for our residents to stop, to shop, to spend their money, increase revenue, instead of having it a week before. And so folks say, "Well, why should I stay in town? I'm going to leave on Fourth, Independence Day," which is a lot of times when they take their time off of work, especially our commuters. So hopefully, we can move in the direction of celebrating Independence Day on Independence Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else, please come forward. Welcome.
Hi, guys. My name is Blanche, and I live in the downtown area. First, I want to take a minute out to mention about Public Works, since I'm always out and about. They're wonderful, they're a wonderful department. They're always out there, they're always using their, their talents for things that we're not really aware of. And their work in the shelter, at the animal shelter, is to be commended. Early on, they were out there in the rain and in the storm, and they were working really hard, and that's commendable. A brief discussion on, again, our animal shelter. It's raining kittens and cats. And, but to commend the police department, the code enforcement, and also the shelter personnel. They have been working very hard with the rescues, coordinating with the rescues to get these kittens out, and they've been doing it quite thrifty and in ease. I have not seen it work so well in many years, and it's working wonderfully. What they're doing in our coordination is to be commended. And as I say that, I'm excited as the progress is growing for the shelter and, and everything that, all of the things that are happening for our animals in our community. Certainly, we could point downfalls, or, but I don't consider them. I just consider that we're improving more and more. And we're tackling one thing at a time, and some of that takes money and time. When I'm, I'd like to discuss about dog licensing. There's a new trend that's going on with getting dog licensing, not only required, but getting some fun in it. And the customer, the dog owner, will be happy to pay for these type of designer dog licensing tags. There's a progression that you could get. There's online profiles for their dogs that they could do, and even some loss service benefits of getting a licensed dog tag. So as we progress further, this is not something that needs to be done immediately, but I think that it will put the fun in, in a lot of these things. And then I'd like to thank the council for, and the staff for continuing to put your heart and your knowledge when it comes to animals and your plans. I trust each and every one of you to support any kind of funding that is needed for the animals, and I know that you guys are doing that. Please don't only rely on those kind individuals that donate, and also those individuals' grants. There's a combination of also our city with that. So as you discuss the budget money, please give anything that the chief wants. Please give him what he wants and he needs, and I know that you're going to do that. I know that, I trust that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Please, anyone else, come forward. Going once, going twice, I don't see or hear anybody coming forward, so we'll go ahead, and we will close the public forum. Yes. Okay.
But I don't, it's regarding item 7H. That was pulled from the consent agenda, so I don't know if you want to hold those comments until that item.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go ahead and read that when we get to 7H. So if I forget, remind me, Lucy. Okay? And that was the only correspondence we got today?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. Now, consideration approval of the consent agenda. And Lucy, if you could read these off, please.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrants numbers 251448 through 251793 in the amount of $2,519,504.23. Minutes for the April 16, 2025 city council meeting. Minutes for the May 6, 2025 adjourned city council meeting. Minutes for the May 7, 2025 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6930, amending the fiscal year 2425 budget by increasing revenue and expenditures for retiree health internal service fund budget in the amount of $323,418. City Council Resolution Number 6931, approving an easement deed from the City of Los Banas to PG&E dedicating an easement approximately 179 quarter feet of land at the southeast corner of Parcel C in the subdivision, the villages 5 Phase 3, and authorizing the Public Works Director to execute the associated documents. City Council Resolution Number 6932, accepting the Fire Department mandated inspection report pursuant to 13146.49 of the California Health and Safety Code, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, before we approve that, Mayor Protown Lewis had some comments on G.
Yes, I just had a quick question, Fire Chief. On these inspections that you have to do, is this to be done on an annual basis, or does it, is it done on a fiscal basis, or is there any timeline that it has to be done within?
It's an annual basis. It's due for us, but the addition of the fire prevention captain that we've added, this past year, we were able to get those inspections rolling. We're still short a few inspections that we still have in progress, but we're, we have to report these prior to the fiscal year budget, so I didn't want to add to the agenda for any of the budget during the budget hearing, so I wanted to have this ahead of time prior to the budget.
So the inspections will go from January to December of each year?
We're going to probably do, well, we started them January to December, but there are a few that we didn't catch this year, so we're trying to capture them and have them done by July. So I'm trying to get them on a fiscal schedule, a fiscal year schedule. That way, they'll be reported based on the fiscal year.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Yeah, answer your questions. Okay, item H already was pulled, so if we could have a motion to approve consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Okay, we have motion and second approved consent agenda as submitted. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Now, we'll move on to item 7H, which is City Council Resolution 6933, approving memorandum of understanding between the City of Los Banas and Grasslands Water District regarding cooperative efforts to implement the recharge basin and the stormwater capture project. And Chuck, is this going to be?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, presented before you tonight is the MOU, our second MOU with Grasslands Water District regarding a cooperative agreement to develop the stormwater basin at the northeast end of town. It's shown, the bottom of the basin is shown in a picture from a previous council meeting. Goes north. It contains approximately 160 acres, and we've obtained the basin and have agreed to work jointly with the Grasslands Water District to operate the basin, both in their benefit, to their benefit and our benefit. The water district gets a more reliable source of water. It takes out their variability in delivering water to all their customers up and downstream, up and down, or north and south of the city. And the city gets the reliability for capturing stormwater. We get stormwater, we, it levels out our stormwater collecting ability, plus we get exchange credits and recharge credits over time. It, at 160 acres, it can hold approximately 500 acre foot of water, which is a significant amount of water, which will benefit the city both now and in the future. This agreement attached to report is to establish a cooperation with the water district in operating their, their needs, and we, the city operates, is going to operate the basin, let water in, water out, at the direction of the grasslands. And like I mentioned, with their, with their direction, when arranged, we get credit for the water going there, we have a place to put it, and then when it seeps into the ground, we get credit for that, as well as a holding basin gives us also credit in the future for water exchange. Be happy to take any questions.
Okay, we have questions from council. I think it's a good deal for both agencies, ours and, and the water district. And we've gone over this, we've had, Gary and I had meetings with water districts, and this is a good beginning point to start recharging. Any questions by the council? Any further, Chuck, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, then we have a motion, please. Yes, I'm sorry. That's right, you have to remind me.
The Grassland Water District Board Directors, staff, and 2,500 landowners strongly support the approval of the MOU with the City of Los Banas regarding the collaborative efforts and furtherance of the first of hopefully many stormwater capture projects around the city. city. This project will construct 160 acres of recharge and recovery storage basins east of town between the Grassland Water Districts, San Luis and Santa Fe canals, which will hold up to 500 acre feet of water. The basins will be filled by stormwater, leaving the city an excess flow in the Grasslands canals, providing flood control, groundwater recharge for the City of Los Banas, and additional water supply for the Grassland Water District. The project also has the potential to improve drink and water quality for residents near the basins by mounding freshwater proximal to city domestic wells. The Grassland District applauds the City of Los Banas for the work done to date and looks forward to the construction and implementation of this project to safeguard residents in the neighboring wetlands. Submitted Rick Ortega, General Manager, Grassland Water District.
Okay. We agree with him. And if we got a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 6933.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, approve Resolution 6933 has been presented. Any further questions or comments from the city council? Not hearing any? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next item I eight is presentation regarding the local agency disability friendly action plan, and this will be by Mike King from Pear Street Consulting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have, uh, for you a presentation from Mike King from Pear Street Consulting, as you stated, uh, regarding the local agency, I'm sorry, local agent, aging and disability friendly action plan. Uh, he's making the tours around the county. Uh, we're the second stop in that group. We appreciate him being here, and we'll have a, a PowerPoint, or you can just say next slide and we'll take care of it for you, Mike, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you, City Manager Brusley. Uh, great to be with the council tonight and mayor, um, staff. Uh, just before I begin, uh, has anyone heard of the, uh, Merced County Aging Disability Friendly Action Plan yet before tonight?
No.
Okay, well, I'm glad I'm here then. Uh, a big part of what we're trying to do is build awareness, uh, and that's, uh, a body of work that's gonna continue past, hopefully, the, uh, County Board of Supervisors approving this plan at their June 10th meeting, and I'll talk more about that. Um, so the local aging and disability friendly action plan is a concept that is being, um, encouraged by the California Department of Aging, uh, as a response that communities can take to prepare for the significant increase, uh, in, um, the older adult population, so adults 16 and over, uh, not only across the state of California, but this is happening, uh, nationwide as well as around the world, driven by a number of factors, probably the largest of which, uh, is the baby boom generation. And so we're gonna continue to see, uh, adults age 16 and over, that, uh, part of our population grow over the next four decades. And so, um, it presents a really wonderful opportunity for the City of Los Banos, Merced County, communities around the county, um, to redesign the way that we build community, uh, to be more accessible, more livable for folks as they age. And so, uh, next slide, please. So just to give you some context in terms of what this plan, um, is and what it means, it's a five-year plan. Uh, it will go into effect, hopefully, July 1 of this year, uh, through June 30th, June 30th of 2030, um, but that will not be the end. The kinds of issues, uh, as you can imagine, that we're gonna be working on, uh, will take many years to implement, and so with every five years, uh, there will be another update of the plan, and we'll continue to work through the list of needs that have been identified by community members. Um, the LDAP, uh, just to, to be more brief, uh, improves the community's livability and accessibility, as I said, and will address current emerging and future needs, uh, of both older adults as well as people with disabilities. Um, the overlap between those two populations is significant, uh, and so are their advocacy efforts, which is why we, uh, will be looking at issues related to both populations together. Um, and to be sort of flexible and, um, uh, positioned to take advantage of funding resources through the California Department of Aging, uh, and, uh, nationwide with AARP, the plan is purposely aligned with both California's Master Plan for Aging, which was released in 2021, as well as AARP's Eight Domains of Livability. Those are the, the foundation of, um, the plan that has been developed. Next slide, please. Um, so just to give a little bit more context around that growth in population among these two groups, um, currently, there's around 65,000, um, combined, uh, residents either over the age of 60 or who are living with a disability at any age, so that's roughly 23% of the population, so that's current 2023 estimates from the Census Bureau. By 2030, uh, those two populations will grow to roughly 72,000, uh, and that will continue, um, uh, at, at a similar rate all the way through 2060. Um, some communities around California will see a 150% increase, uh, in these populations over that time period. It won't be quite as large here in Merced County, but, um, it is happening here as well. And again, this, um, uh, rather than, you know, in any way labeling this as a concern, it's a wonderful thing. People are living longer, uh, hopefully, we all have that opportunity. Um, so really, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity that we all have to think about how we can make our communities more livable, um, for these two, uh, members of our communities. Next slide, please. So the approach that we've taken, uh, since, uh, my firm Pear Street Consulting came on board to support the county and specifically the county's Area Agency on Aging and, uh, Human Services Agency in this work, is, um, to build relationships with, uh, cross-sectoral partners, so, um, you know, nonprofit organizations serving these populations, um, local government agencies and staff, uh, community members, champions, um, and advocates in different communities, um, as well as, um, uh, older adults, people with disabilities, and caregivers, caregivers, uh, to those populations. Um, and we've formed an advisory committee that's met monthly since January to help us kind of analyze and think through the priorities that are emerging from the 10 focus groups that we've done around the county in that time. And so we've included a number of, uh, age and disability friendly experts, excuse me, uh, among that group, as well as, uh, representatives from, uh, cities and communities around the county that can speak to local needs. And so they've helped us, um, galvanize around 14 specific project recommendations that are in our draft plan, uh, which I'll outline in a second. Uh, and, um, just want to reiterate, this is a living plan, so even though the focus will be on addressing those 14 projects over the next five years, right, as issues emerge, as we accomplish our goals, um, there will be new projects and, and new, um, uh, items to implement. Next slide, please. Okay, so just to give you a sense of the focus groups real quick, we engaged, um, roughly 319 community members across 10 focus groups between January, uh, and, uh, the last one was conducted, uh, last week in Snelling. So we tried to really be geographically, um, distributed and, and reach, uh, all corners of the county, so you can see the communities, um, that we've engaged. Uh, and we felt really, really great about the fact that the focus groups, uh, were largely representative of the population in the way that we intended, so, um, largely, uh, you know, so 70% of focus group participants were over the age, uh, of 50, uh, household incomes, um, 75% were under 50,000, right? So, so reaching lower income households, older households, we had a variety of folks who are living with different disabilities who participated. So we really met, you know, kind of engaged the community members that we wanted to, to understand their priorities and the needs that they wanted to see addressed. Some of the, the gaps, you know, we'd love to sort of continue to work on in the future, uh, would be reaching, uh, more Portuguese and Punjabi speaking residents, wanna engage those populations more, and also, um, make sure that we're, we're incentivizing more older, um, men to join these conversations. It was largely, uh, female, female audiences at most of the focus groups. Next slide, please. And so where we're at in the process at this point is we, um, have, uh, gone through a public comment period, a draft plan, uh, was put forward on April 29th based on all this data that we've collected and the work of the advisory committee. Uh, we received comments that have been incorporated into a final version of the plan, um, that went to the County Board of Supervisors today. That was the deadline for posting to their agenda for June 10th. Um, it doesn't mean that we can't incorporate any feedback from the council this evening or from staff, uh, like I said, this is a living document, but trying to work with the timeline that, that we're working under for them, um, and then we'll, uh, hopefully, uh, get approval of that plan at their June 10th meeting. Next slide, please. So I'll just quickly walk through the, uh, 14 project recommendations that are the, the core of this plan. Uh, I'll, I'll, it's a lot of recommendations, um, and I wanna, uh, value the time here, but, uh, the, really the core areas that we identified through the focus groups and our engagement with community members are communications and information, right? So there's a lot of great existing programs serving older adults and people with disabilities, and a lot of people just don't know, um, what's out there and what's available to them that they are eligible, um, to take advantage of. So improving the way that the county and its partners, uh, communicate about the opportunities that are out there for these two populations, that is sort of priority number one. Second priority is transportation. It's a geographically, um, dispersed county, as you all know, um, urban and rural areas, um, you have a, a, a great public transit system, but it doesn't meet all of the needs of residents. Uh, we've heard that loud and clear, especially in some of the more outlying communities outside of, uh, the City of Merced, and so trying to figure out how to create lower-cost, um, transportation options for folks to get to critical medical appointments, to get to, uh, the grocery store, or, or to, um, get their food for the week, um, and, and other critical needs is a, is a major priority that we want to address through this plan. And then third, uh, as will not be a surprise to anyone in the room, is affordable housing, right? We heard that very loud and clear, that was, from the community's standpoint, the top priority. Um, there are lots of plans trying to address that, we recognize that, we're not trying to recreate the wheel, we're not replacing the housing element that, uh, I know your city and, and other cities have and, and working towards those goals, but we, we have some, uh, ideas in terms of how we can support those efforts through this initiative as well. So with that in mind, um, I'll just kind of quickly go through the recommendations and, and then we can open up to, uh, any questions or comments. But, uh, so as I said, communications major focus, so we want to make sure that, um, the Area Agency on Aging and its partners, uh, put together a comprehensive communications plan and, and fundamentally change the way in which we talk about these issues and engage communities around, um, the needs of older adults and people with disabilities. Um, in terms of, um, caregiving, right? So this is really, from a housing perspective, we want to keep folks in their homes as long as possible. Uh, one of the lower-cost ways we can do that is to provide volunteer caregiver, caregiver support, to help folks with meal prep, with home maintenance, home repairs, uh, yard maintenance, so all the things that can allow them to stay in their homes for as long as possible, where the cost for them is cheaper than to move out, to have to pay rent somewhere else, or to have to pay for assisted living. So that's, um, that's very much a, uh, an affordable housing solution as well. Um, and then the third one up on the screen, or was on the screen a moment ago, is, um, also providing volunteer, um, driver programs, um, that can match folks who have needs to get to doctor's appointments, to get to other critical, um, locations, uh, and to provide that support through neighbors, uh, and other folks that have the time and, um, would be willing to offer that service, uh, reimbursed for their gas and some minor costs. Um, project recommendations four through seven on the next slide, uh, another housing-focused project, wanna, uh, scale up the existing county, uh, subsidized home repair and accessibility modifications program. So again, another way to keep folks in their homes as they age, as they may develop mobility or other disability challenges. Um, keeping folks in their homes until we can produce more affordable housing stock, uh, i- is really gonna be the thing that can, that can impact these populations the most. Uh, recommendation five, also around housing, um, the county and in particular, the Area Agency on, Agency on Aging wants to, you know, work with your community, with other communities to figure out, is there more we can do to try to incentivize development of housing specifically for older adults and people with disabilities? Um, that's, uh, just to be candid, sort of a gray area, but one in which, you know, we'd wanna explore with you all and other partners what's possible. Uh, item six, recommendation number six, is about, um, social engagement. So we know, coming off the pandemic, folks, um, uh, have been isolated, um, they, uh, you know, may be experiencing loneliness, this is an epidemic around the country, but especially among older adults, and so what more can we do to engage folks? It was great to connect, um, with, with Joe Heim and your Park and Rec Department. Uh, we want to do more of that with communities around the county to make sure that, um, opportunities, lots of, uh, variety in terms of social engagement can be offered through, um, community centers and other venues that are available. Uh, recommendation seven, um, is, is more of an advocacy role that we can play in transportation needs, uh, and that includes active mobility and pedestrian safety needs as well, and so working very closely with the bus, who's been a partner on our advisory committee, and continuing to make sure that the needs of these two populations are front and center in the decisions that are being made in terms of how the public transportation system continues to evolve. Next slide. Uh, recommendation eight, um, is, uh, it kind of dovetails with our communication strategy, but building awareness through a dedicated campaign, um, to really incentivize more opportunities for older adults and people with disabilities in leadership roles, um, so on boards, commissions, uh, and, and other opportunities where, um, they can help actively design their communities. Recommendation nine, um, in our work with the nonprofit Merced Lau Family Community that serves the Southeast Asian population in the Merced area, they overwhelmingly, um, really, uh, wanted to, um, explore the opportunity for, uh, community garden, uh, for, for their population, um, and the connection that that has for many immigrants, uh, from that part of the world, um, really want to kind of reconnect with the land and to be able to, um, also have a, an intergenerational oppor, opportunity to connect, uh, their community members. Recommendation number 10, uh, folks, uh, talked about the cost of end-of-life planning and specifically funeral services, so, uh, we want to work with the Central California Legal Services Team, um, and other partners to figure out how to provide low-cost, uh, planning, uh, and services there. Next slide. And then recommendation 11, um, speaks to the needs that we've heard around pedestrian safety infrastructure, so repairing roads, um, uh, either implementing or repairing stoplights, signs, sidewalks, so making communities more walkable, more bikeable for these two populations. Um, not all communities highlighted that, but, but certainly some of the more rural communities, uh, highlighted those needs. Uh, recommendation number 12, uh, speaks to the digital divide. I think we're all probably aware of that at this point, um, so in what ways can we support, um, additional sort of digital education among older adults in particular, and provide low-cost opportunities for them to learn, um, safe ways to navigate the internet, to use their computer, smartphones in their daily lives? Recommendation 13 is about, um, really specifically rural communities that don't have sufficient urgent care, medical services, um, are traveling long distances, so thinking of Snelling, thinking of, um, Gustine, Hillmar, um, so how can we, uh, incent, incentivize the location of these services, work with the county sheriff, work with ambulance companies to ensure that, um, the quality of service isn't less because of where they happen to reside, uh, within the county boundaries? And then next slide, the final 14th recommendation, um, similar to the, the, uh, one that I just talked about in terms of pedestrian safety, is to focus specifically on the need for lighting in certain areas. We heard from certain communities that that is a real deterrent from older adults, people with disabilities, being out in community, um, feeling safe, feeling as though they can be. with disabilities, being out in community, feeling safe, feeling as though they can be downtown or in other high-traffic areas after dark. And so doing an assessment, thinking about ways in which we can incentivize the implementation of sufficient lighting fixtures. So it's a long list, we recognize that. There are no dedicated county resources for this body of work, so it's something that, you know, we're looking to get creative in terms of volunteer opportunities, using existing resources more efficiently, but also there will have to be a lot of grant writing and partnership building to pursue funding that's available through other channels outside of the general fund budget. So we're not asking anything specific of the city of Los Banos. You know, we hope that you will be a partner in this work, that you see the value of it, but we've heard from some communities, kind of an instant concern of like, okay, now you're going to come to us and make us pay for this out of our budget. Just want to assure you that that's not part of this plan. It's more to build awareness and figure out, you know, what are some of the sort of short-term victories that we can achieve with the resources that we do have, and building more of a partnership between staff here, between your council and Merced County, and just slowly kind of building towards the communities that we want to see for older adults and people with disabilities in our lives. So we welcome that partnership with you. And with the next slide, I'll just sort of pose a couple of questions, but feel free to take your comments and questions wherever you want to go with them. But, yeah, curious if you just have any questions about any of the information I presented? And then also, you know, as we look towards implementing this plan starting in July, are there certain ways in which you might advise us to engage with your body, with staff, but any context that you think might be helpful so that we can be efficient and honor the approach that would work best for all of you?
I think this is really good. It looks like it's an informational piece that we can use to help develop. So like, on your transportation thing, are you going to be presenting at M C A G tomorrow? About that, for the bus and things like that?
Ultimately, we will. I won't be there tomorrow, but yes, that is the intent, is to create some structure by which these partners are actively addressing these issues in a timely fashion.
So I can see, like, if a city or we're working on a general plan, you have a lot of information to help maybe bring to light issues that, you know, yeah, we do outreach, and we go out and talk to the public too, but you might have more well-rounded outreach than what we could just get here. And something we, somebody needs in Snelling or something like that might be a good idea for Los Banos. So I definitely see that. I know, I was taking writing down, when you get to housing affordability, I could see you working with the general plans, and that is something definitely needed throughout the whole county, especially Los Banos. And to engage the seniors, I think Joe can talk about pickleball for about two hours, so just build pickleball courts all over the county, and you'll finish that one item there. So I don't know. Council, do you have any questions? Mike? Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you for coming this evening. And certainly, I'm sure you're aware that all cities are strapped for money, and your idea is good. I'm hoping that you're going to do a lot of grant applications to raise money to do this program. But, you know, I'm hearing about different ethnic groups that you want to serve, but I didn't hear anything about income demographics. Is there a certain income demographic that you expect to serve? Because I don't see all seniors participating in this.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great question. Yeah, the intent and where the need is, is largely with our lower-income senior and persons with disability households, right? So that needs to be the focus. A lot of the issues that we heard and that we want to address through this plan particularly hurt those households, right? So, you know, someone with greater means, right, may be able to pay for transportation options as they age. That is not a resource that other households may have available, right? So largely, right, as we address, whether it's communications, transportation, housing, some of the safety and the infrastructure projects, right, the focus will be on the impact that those projects can have, specifically on lower-income households. That's ultimately where I think the focus needs to be, and by doing that, the benefits will be there for everyone.
Thank you. Evan, you have anything?
No, just to be clear, though, this is purely informational, like, there's not like a transitional phase to where you'll have staff or anything to actually help with grant writing or anything like that?
Not at this time. So right now, and the plan, and I should have put it up, maybe on the next slide, did I put the website? So the website is www.agefriendlymercedcounty.org. So you can go on there, that's where the draft is currently. We've made some changes since then in terms of the version that's going to the, or that went to the board today. But to get to your question, the, in terms of implementation, right, the area agency on aging, their current staff, they're not hiring additional staff, their staff are going to lead this work. It means that, you know, they're going to move their work plans around to try to focus more on the projects that we've identified. I know that for them, communications is a big part of what they've recognized they need to change. So they really, from the conversations we've had internally, are going to shift their efforts to spend a lot more time building partnerships and learning more about what's happening in each community, what different organizations outside the county or outside city government are doing to provide services. So there's still a fair amount of learning and relationship building that will need to take place before, I think, we'll know for sure how some of this implementation will take place. But yeah, it's sort of existing staff at this time, with the hope that with additional funds becoming available through other channels, they can get more of the support that they're going to need.
Yeah, I mean, you got to start with the data, to give us some money to do something with it.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, the county was really forward-thinking in terms of going to California Department of Aging to get a grant to do the planning for this work, so it was dedicated for that purpose. But in terms of ongoing funds, there's a number of sort of key players in the national landscape, including AARP, that make dollars available for these types of projects. So we're going to get them sort of organized and ready to take advantage of those opportunities. But again, just want to make sure everybody knows, right, this is a methodical, let's be very clear about the victories that we can achieve, celebrate those, and just sort of move forward systematically. And in 10 years, 15 years, right, we will have more of the services and infrastructure that these populations need.
Thank you. Well, I hope I can see your plan in 30 years.
Yes, I hope so too. Yeah, we got to make sure it's sustainable.
So anyway, if there's no more questions, we really appreciate you being here and making us aware of this project.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you all.
Do you have anything? Oh, Stacy, do you have anything? Nope. Thought you were going for the mic. Okay, thanks a lot, Mike. Thank you. Okay, the next item is a public hearing. If, hallelujah. The next item is a public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action as described herein to court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. This is a public hearing to receive information regarding the status of city employee job vacancies to comply with a new Assembly Bill 2561 that's been in place. With this, we will give a staff report before I open up to the public hearing. So Lucy, I think you're going to give the report, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Tonight, I'm reporting on the status of city employee job vacancies to comply with Assembly Bill 2561. This is a public hearing, and it's for informational items only. No action is required by the council. After I finish my report, please open the hearing for any public comments and then close it. AB 2561 was signed into law by Governor Newsom on September 22nd, 2024, and became effective January 1st of 2025. The law requires all local agencies to publicly report on job vacancies at least once per year. The purpose of this law is to address the problem of ongoing vacancies in the public sector. As ongoing vacancies can increase workloads for current employees, it can lead to burnout and hurt the delivery of public services. Under AB 2561, we are required to do three things. Number one is to hold a public hearing and report the status of vacancies and recruitment efforts. Number two, identify any hiring challenges or needed changes to policies or procedures. And number three, to allow recognized bargaining units the chance to speak if they wish. As of May 1st of 2025, the city of Los Banos has a total of 199 full-time budgeted positions. Of these, 15 positions are vacant, which puts our overall vacancy rate at 7.5%. This is considered to be low and manageable. There are no employee bargaining groups with vacancy rates of 20% or higher, which means no enhanced reporting is required under SB 2561. A quick summary of vacancy rates by employee groups are as follows. Police Officers Association, we have three vacancies out of the 37 authorized, which puts us at an 8.1%. The Firefighters Association, we have one vacancy out of 19, which is a 5.3%. Police Sergeants Association, we have no vacancies. Police Middle Managers Association, we have no vacancies. Dispatchers and Community Services Officers Association, we have three vacancies out of the 19, and that puts us at a 15.8%. The Public Works and Miscellaneous Employees Association, we have two vacancies out of the 74, which is a 2.7%. Unrepresented positions, we have six vacancies out of a total of 39, which is a 15.3%. Vacancies happen for many reasons. It can be retirements, promotions, resignations, or terminations. In 2024, we filled 30 full-time positions and hired 14 part-time positions. Before posting each job opening, we review the job description and then work with department staff to plan the best way to recruit. We use an online system called NeoGov to manage applications, screen candidates, and keep the process organized. We hold interviews and testing when needed. Once a candidate is chosen, we move forward with job offers, which involve HR, the department head, finance, and the city manager. To recruit and retain employees, the city offers competitive salaries and benefits, paid time off, retirement plans, annual merit raises up to step six, employee assistant programs, annual cost of living adjustments to salary, employee recognition programs like Employee of the Month, anniversary gifts, appreciation events, birthday and anniversary celebrations. There are some recruitment challenges, and some jobs are harder to fill, especially higher-level positions that require college degrees, special licenses or certifications, or unique experience. In some cases, salary expectations are higher, especially for candidates coming from the Bay Area. To help with this, the city recently completed a compensation study which identified positions needing pay increases. These raises went into effect during the most recent labor negotiations, which resulted in multi-year agreements with all six bargaining groups, which will help us stay competitive. In summary, the city of Los Banos has met the requirements of AB 2561 by holding this public hearing, reporting on the job vacancy, reviewing our recruitment and retention efforts, and giving bargaining units notice of the public hearing and a chance to participate. At this time, there are no recommended changes to city policies or procedures, but we will continue to monitor and adjust as needed. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Lucy. Lucy's our human resource director and also our city clerk. Now I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Any person that would like to speak on this item about employee job vacancies, you're welcome to come speak to the city council. Okay, do not see or hear anyone coming forward. Go ahead and close the public hearing, and then we'll, this is no action, as Lucy said, it's informational only. We just have to publicly let it be known that these positions are open and available for application purposes for the people. So with that, that's it, we'll move on.
Oh, Mayor, I do have some questions.
Oh, you have a question? Sure.
So, under public safety, we have 19 positions. There are three that are vacant, and they're at 15.80%. And under unrepresented, we have 39 employees, six vacancies, and the percentage is lower. I'm not quite sure how that works out.
So, 6 divided by 39 is 15.3?
So it's based on the vacancies?
Yes.
Okay, so with three...
There's 37 police officers.
So you're counting the police officers in with the dispatchers and the CEO?
No. There's 19 in that group, and there's three vacancies.
Right. And their percentage is higher than unrepresented? Okay, well, maybe I'll get some help to figure that out.
Yeah, I just did the math, I mean...
All right.
The P O A, 3 divided by 37 is 8%, yeah. And you're looking at unrepresented 39?
Yeah, 39 budgeted positions, and we have six unfilled, we have six vacancies at 15.3%, which is lower than the police safety dispatchers. The number of vacancies. So it gives you the same percentage?
Pretty much, yes. When it's reduced down?
When you double it up, it's going to give you the same.
Or reduce it down.
Or reduce it down, it's going to give you the same percentage.
Okay. And then in public works category, you have one recreation coordinator. Is that department still under public works, or is it because there's this last miscellaneous unit?
It's because public works and parks and recreation employees are in that unit.
Okay, all right. Now, in the unrepresented, I know in the last couple of budgets, there was a position for assistant manager in there. I'm hoping that's being taken out for the budget coming forward, and that, you know, that one position is, I don't know if that's being counted in these 39 positions, but, you know, that's my take on it. That's not anything we're looking to fill at this time, and with all the criteria that the state has for reporting purposes, I don't think that we need to have positions counted for in our budget that we're not going to hire or put anybody in. So that, in my opinion, that needs to be taken out of the count and not included in the budget that's going to be coming up to council here next month. And I look forward to seeing that out of the budget. And those are the only questions I have, thank you.
Kevin, anything?
I'm just curious, we have, so the two sections, the two that are the highest, public safety dispatcher and CSOs, and then the unrepresented, are we doing any kind of outreach to try to get people to apply for those jobs?
We're actually in the process of recruiting for most of the positions at some point, where we're either advertising, interviewing, in backgrounds. I know the chief just gave me... I know the chief just gave me a note. He says that they're, in the background process, they're either doing psychs or meds in the process.
For the unrepresented, for CSO and dispatchers?
And police, too. Yeah.
What falls into the... We're about a month away from having all three of those positions.
And I know we had interviews for utilities yesterday, and we're just waiting on Mr. Heim to tell us about the rec coordinator. Firefighter is, that vacancy is because of a promotion, and so it just takes time to fill that vacancy. Dispatchers and CSOs, a lot of those go to be police officers. They go to the academy, so that's what those vacancies are from.
The unrepresented, what kind of roles are those?
That would be people in finance, like HR. It would be your admin coordinator in admin, your assistant city manager, finance manager...
Okay, so those are the ones that are harder to recruit for because they often require more experience or degrees and things like that?
Yes. Finance manager, for sure. Assistant public works director, it requires a PE. I think that's all I can think of off the top of my head.
So, if they stay open for too long, do we take more steps to try to different approaches recruiting?
Yes. Yes. We look at the job description and see if we need to tweak the requirements, or we reach out to other jurisdictions, like publications for public works, or for finance, or for parks and rec. We look to the departments to help us figure those things out.
Okay. And then, I know we did, and you mentioned that we made some changes to salaries and things like that. Are we tracking the metrics on that to see if that's going to make a difference next year for retention?
It already has made a difference this year, so that we can check the metrics.
But in next year's report, maybe we'll be able to know what the difference was for the past, for this next coming up here.
Well, depending on if you add new positions, you know, that'll be... But I know, not this fiscal year, but last fiscal prior, there were 20 positions added to the budget. So, not only were we filling the attrition positions, we had 20 new positions. And we're a small HR staff, sorry. But with all the department's help, we were pretty successful in filling vacancies.
Okay, with that, we will move on. Thank you very much. And informational again only, so no action will be taken. We'll move on to item 10, consideration adoption of the city resolution number 6934, accepting the 2023-2024 fiscal year audit reports consisting of the annual comprehensive financial report, the government auditing standards report, and the single audit report. With this, we'll go to our finance director, Moreno.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and members of the public. It is my privilege to introduce the independent auditors, who have conducted a comprehensive review of the city's financial statements, internal controls, and compliance with applicable regulation. Their expertise is instrumental in ensuring integrity, transparency, and accountability in our financial operations. Following their rigorous assessment, the auditors have issued an unmodified or clean opinion on the city's financial statements, confirming that they fairly represent the city's financial position in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This reflects our commitment to sound fiscal management and adherence to regulatory standards. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Price Page and Company CPAs, who will provide a detailed overview of their findings and key observations from the audit of fiscal year 2324. Mr. Josh Giosa will walk us through the scope of their review, financial highlights, and recommendations to further strengthen our financial management practices. Please join me in welcoming CPA Josh Giosa as they begin their presentation.
Welcome. Hello. Thank you, Ms. Moreno, and congratulations again on your new position. We look forward to working with you both in the present and hopefully in the future as well. So, thank you for that introduction. And to Mayor Amabile, did I say it right?
That's the correct way to say it.
I got it. All right. Thank you. And I did look it up when I sat down, so I did cheat a little bit.
I've known everywhere except the valley as Amabile. I mean, everywhere else, it's Amabile. In the valley, it's Amabile.
I walked up wanting to say that, or I sat down wanting to say that, like, that's not how you say it. So, anyway, I hear that means lovable as well.
There you go.
My last name in Italian is, it's Giosa, Joyosa. That means joyful, so together, we're an amiable bunch, aren't we? All right. So, anyway, good evening and thank you, council. You know, all the employees, directors, officials. My name is Josh Giosa. I'm a certified public accountant at Price Page and Company. I am a government audit and advisory services partner, meaning not only do I perform and oversee the audits of local agencies, but also we provide advisory or consulting services for cities that are more in need of those types of services. So, we do a lot here. I've been, some part of the audit for the city of Los Banos, I want to say going back 10 years. I think when I started, I was a supervisor, then manager, and then eventually a partner. Been a partner for the last four years, I believe, on this. So, it's been, always been a great experience and, you know, an honor to serve the city. So, quick introduction. Oh, I don't have a fancy PowerPoint. Last time I tried to do a PowerPoint, I felt stuck, like I had to, like, stick to it. I couldn't... So, we're just going with the little agenda here. And at any time, please feel free to cut me off, you know, ask questions. I know there's a lot of misconceptions over what an audit is versus what an audit is not, and I hope to do my best to explain that tonight, as well as, yeah, again, any questions, you know, anybody from council may have. So, again, introduction, I did that for myself. Not here tonight is our audit supervisor, Jasmine Loji. She was the in-charge auditor. She was the one that was, from the beginning to the end, deep into the details, working with her staff, there were two additional staffs, there was a team of four overall, myself being the partner. She and I would get together, both during the planning stages, which is really the most critical stage, right? Because there are limitations to what you can do in an audit, given constraints under the general, generally accepted auditing standards, as well as the budget, right? Because, you know, we're not billing you guys $500,000. We have to do a good job under the auditing standards over a much smaller, much smaller fee. And that's where the standards really guide us, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So, quick overview. What is an audit? What is our audit process? An audit, at its core, is for an independent group, right? That'd be Price Page and Company. We don't have any affiliation with the city whatsoever in a management role. It's our responsibility to assess the financial statements for the city of Los Banos and provide an opinion to council about whether those financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, fairly presented means we're providing reasonable assurance that there are no errors or fraud material enough or significant enough to change the opinions of a reasonable user of the financial statements. Who is a reasonable user? Well, we've got, we've got three of them right now on the dais. Well, I'm the dais up here. We have the city manager, is very important information for the city manager. We also have members of the public here. We have maybe prospective constituency that's thinking about moving to the city of Los Banos. Maybe they're interested in the financial position and whether, hey, is this a city that's in big, in financial trouble? Or, you know, is it a stable situation from a financial perspective? So, that's what we do, right? So, how do we do that? Really, there's three major, or I would say, there's three large pieces. There's the planning or the risk assessment. Again, we can't come in and look at the tens of thousands of transactions that occur each year. Nobody could do that. That's, maybe with AI coming up, we can expand that much, much greater, much more greatly. But what we have to do is assess risk. Where, if anywhere, and there's always somewhere, but where is there most likely to be an error or fraud that is, that is significant in nature? That's number one. So, how do we go about that process? So, we start off by doing what we call a survey of operations, right? Luckily, and this is good for us, we have a really good understanding of the city, right? So, we take what we know from last year, and we sit down and we try to gain an understanding of what has changed. If something significant has changed, turnover in the finance department, that, that could result in a higher risk of error. Not necessarily fraud, but error, but also fraud. If now you have these controls in place, internal controls, these processes for these transaction cycles, like, say expenditures, or your revenue cycles, where people that were originally in those cycles are no longer with the city, how is the city adjusting and adapting to that, right? To make sure that controls are still in place. Another one, say there's a new debt, a new significant debt, right? Okay, so that's something we may want to follow up and look into further to make sure it's being accounted for correctly. And if you have a new bond, then there are going to be restrictions on what can be spent for that bond, from the proceeds of that bond. So, we will look into something like that. So, that's, that's step one. Step two, and this is related specifically to fraud, is we confidentially, confidentially, confidentially interview random, and it changes every year's employees, management, and someone from the board, sometimes more than one person from council. And we ask them specific questions related to fraud. Do you know of any fraud? Where are the risks of fraud? If fraud were to happen, where would it happen? Help us. Help us try to understand where we should look. Is management, is management pressuring anybody? Is council pressuring anybody to do something that they don't feel comfortable doing, right? So, there's, so there's a, again, we're looking for material error or fraud, but, but recent changes to the audit standards now also require us to consider waste and abuse, right? Abuse may be if there is some undue pressure to maybe bring in a vendor that's related to somebody in management, somebody has power, somebody on council, right? We have to consider stuff like that as a part of these fraud questionnaires. If there's something, if there's something that comes from those that is, that we believe is relevant, and even if it's not entirely relevant to what we do, we may communicate that to management. Hey, this is something that came up. You may want to look into this, right? But if there is any potential fraud that we believe to be valid or significant, we will, that's a risk. That's a significant risk, and we will look into that further. Additionally, we do what we call preliminary analytics. Analytics is, one of the things about accounting, is you can, you really can know what to expect the next year through various types of measurements. So, for instance, well, we just talked about, you know, payroll and vacancies. We have a budget for full vacancies, I mean, I'm sorry, for a fully staffed department. And so, we know what that budget is. We can go find out, well, how many people, how many employees are actually currently and throughout the year employed and staffed in that department? And we can make a projection of what payroll should be, right? Within a given amount. If that's something totally different than we're expecting, we're going to follow up, and we're going to look at stuff, right? Well, at least we're going to assess that as a higher risk. We get into actual audit later on, right? So, we compare various balances that we know should be around a certain area based off of history plus changes in order to, again, assess risk. The third thing we do is, or is that number three? But that was number three. And number four is we do what we call internal control walkthroughs, right? It is management's responsibility always to design controls effectively and implement them. You may have the most perfect designed controls, but look at your accounting policy. There's nothing better, right? But have they actually been implemented? You have the staff available to follow those policies and procedures. If you don't, that's a risk, right? And we look through all the major transaction cycles. We gain an understanding in walkthrough to make sure that they've been implemented, such as revenue, the revenue cycle, expenditure cycle, payroll, and cash, right? So, cash, what's a great, what should we be doing every single month as it relates to cash? We should be reconciling our bank. If a bank's not being reconciled in a timely manner, that's a risk for really fraud, right? Why is it not being... Now, maybe you're low on staff, you're a little bit behind, but why is it not? Now, we need to look into that a little bit further. So, that's that whole first part, right? We're gaining an understanding, we're gaining an understanding of controls, the, any changes from last year to this year in our survey of ops. And then, we, after that, again, we design our audit at that point, and then we do our fieldwork. That's the big, that's step two, right? And fieldwork, now we're going to dive in more into those analytics, right? Is what we really expect, did that really happen? We're going to do sampling. We're going to pull transactions and look, and look at detailed transactions to make sure, any number of things, right? Is the amount correct? Was it approved by one or the two or the three people that need to approve this in this cycle? Or did it go to the right fund? Was it classified correctly, right? We're considering, we're always considering compliance over laws, regulations, grant agreements, et cetera. So, if you have a fund set up that specifically, say, let's say, gas tax, right? You're not putting something from, you know, parks and rec. That's not happening, I know it. But parks and rec, we're not, that's not going into that fund, because now we have a compliance issue with laws and regulations, right? So, we do all of our fieldwork. We keep doing that. We look at all the audit schedules. We pull supporting documentation for it, and we audit until the point we believe we have sufficient audit evidence to, to give an opinion on those financial statements, right? After that, we go into our wrap-up phase, and that's like, hey, we're good. Management, we have a management representation letter. Everything you said to us is still accurate. We get a legal representation letter. What lawsuits may exist that are, that according to GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles, need to be presented into the note disclosures? Or sometimes you even have to post a contingent or a liability for a lawsuit that occurred at the time, that was ongoing, and likely to end up in a, likely to end up, I don't even know how to say it right, but in a, something that doesn't work out well for the city, where the city has to pay out at the end, right? A bad judgment. There you go, maybe. So, at that point, we issue our audit reports, and we're done. That in itself is our audit process, right? And at the end of that, we give always two reports, right? We give a report over financial reporting, that's our, that's our independent audit report. We give a report over internal controls. And in this, this year, the city had over $750,000 in federal expenditures. Next year, it's going to be 1 million, which triggered what's called a single audit, which is a compliance audit over those federal expenditures, right? So, just to briefly go through, I talked a lot about what's in this independent auditor's report, which is on page one of the financial statements. And within paragraph one, it says, "We have audited the accompanying financial statements of the government activities." Basically talks about all the different funds, because we give an opinion on every single column in the financial statements, in the basic financial statements. But we have audited these basic financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2024, and the related notes in the financial statements. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly, which means free from material errors or fraud. In all material respects, the respective financial position, and again, it's going to list all those off. Yeah. And ultimately, our opinion was that we gave what's called an unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion says, hey, here's a standard opinion. We don't have to modify it because there were any, there were any material errors that were not corrected. So, in layman's terms, these financial statements, the information in here can be relied upon by the stakeholders, you know, within our city, that this is accurate information and can make decisions based off this for whatever their needs are. So, that's, that's report number one. That's the first opinion we give. Our second report, and that's going to be in our single audit report here, it's a mouthful. It's an independent auditor's report on compliance for each... Wait, I just skipped the page. It's an independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters. So, it's our responsibility to gain an understanding of the internal controls of the city as they relate to financial reporting. It's not our job, it's not our responsibility. We do not... It's not our job, it's not our responsibility, we do not give an opinion on those controls. What we do, according to the auditing standards, which there's are two layers of auditing standards, there's there's, and actually, there's three in this case, there's the generally accepted auditing standards, then there's government auditing standards, which are more, which create a a a a higher scope than just the regular auditing standards. And then we have these single audit, or it's called Uniform Guidance, auditing standards. But while we do not give an opinion on internal controls, if during the our work, our internal control walkthroughs and throughout the audit, we come across, or we identify control controlled deficiencies that are either significant or material, we will, we will communicate that to 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 council. And, you know, we're pleased to announce that we did not have any controlled deficiencies. We did not find any that we considered to rise to the level of either significant or even worse, material. So that's good news. Does that mean everything's perfect? No, that's that's not, that's not what that means. What it means is that the city has strong controls and they're being adhered to. We also, in this report, report on compliance and other matters. So so while we don't, again, we don't, huh, let me back up. We perform tests of compliance, and I talked about that with laws, regulations, grant agreements, et cetera. If we identify any material noncompliance, we would report that as well. We did not identify any non, any material noncompliance, right? There's a third level, and that's the single audit we performed. That's his third audit report. And in this one, we talked, we discussed two things. One, we do give an opinion of of compliance in this report over major federal programs. Alright, and the major federal program that was selected this year, which which is a whole formula for how you select, it was for highway construction, and it was a highway planning and construction grants. And um, and again, similar to the uh financial statement audit, there were, um, it's an unmodified opinion. The city is in compliance with their federal grants. Also, if there were any um, if there, we had beginning intern, or I'm sorry, an understanding of internal controls over compliance of those major programs, and we did not find anything, again, that would rise to the level of a significant or material weakness, controlled deficiency, and if we did, we would have to report that to to council. So those are the three reports we provided. That is our audit process. Are there any questions so far?
Very well said.
Okay.
I've I've been through many of these, I don't think it's ever been explained to me as well, so.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Thank you.
I do have a question, Mayor. Early on, um, and I'm probably not saying this in the correct or proper manner, you stated something about um if, in in the fraudulent manner, if there's pressure put on by either council or an employee or whatever to um maybe hire a particular vendor or do something that maybe might be.
That's just, that's an example of something we consider.
How would you determine that? I mean, if financially the numbers show up.
Yeah.
Correct, how would you determine if there was undue pressure?
Sure, so there's a, well, we we wouldn't, so the 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 easiest way to do that, what we would hope, is in those fraud questionnaires, there is a que, there are questions related to that. And we would hope somebody would bring that to our attention. Because you're right, it's very possible we missed something like that. There's it's, those are one of those things where somebody has to speak up. There are certain controls that cannot be tested, for instance, management override, for instance. That that's something that we learn early, that we do have to rely sometimes on the, on on somebody opening up, on whistleblowers, for instance. And we hope we select the right people to show us that. We could also look at what's the, what is a procurement policy? Right, and we do this, especially when there's a single audit, we're required to look at the procurement policy. And and sometimes at the test of unpredictability, because we do, what what, there's an element of unpredictability we have to bring to every audit. Um, but but in the procurement policy, if it says you have to get three vendors and you have to pick the 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 lowest, right? And then you, and then the city does it, it's like, well, why? And then, oh, this person, you know, is related to this person, this is who they wanted. That's, that would be an example of how we would find something like that. Because you're right, we can't just look at documents and say, you know, there's there might not be, there might be a lot of Lewis's, right? There's not a lot of Geosas, so if you find a Geosa, you know, that contractor, eh, there's going to be, you know. But but a Lewis, that might, that might, that's a more common name. Might not be able to draw that distinction immediately, but but maybe you ask that question. Right, if we come across something like that. See, there's also the the waste piece. How do you check waste? How do you, how do you consider waste? There are, there's a spectrum of people, there are some people who think the entire gov, concept of government is waste. Right? Then there's people who think that there's nothing government can't do that is the most amazing thing in the world. Right, so how do you? It's 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 a consideration, it's a judgment, and normally it would pop out. So for instance, let me just, just quick example. Public ser, or pu, public safety in general will occupy, let's say, 60 to 70% of the general fund budget. Alright, that that that's, that's very, that's general. General government, right, is a much smaller portion of that pie. So if we were to look at the financial statements and see that, oh, like, public safety, which is a primary function of local government, is only 20%, but they're stacking up administrators, so 50%, like, let's just talk about almost every college university right now. Alright, it's 50 or 60% of the budget, we might have to have a conversation about a little bit of waste in that situation as compared to other local governments similar in size and scope to the city of Los Banos. So, little muddy, but that that's, that is, yeah, that that's how we would look into something like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I have a question. How do you pick that person that you send that questionnaire? Because I've, I just finished my fourth, 24th questionnaire.
Okay.
All the years I've been involved with government, the last 12 years has been with the governor's board I was on, and I just did M C A Gs like a month ago.
Okay.
So how do you pick?
I think their client of ours actually now.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
We just got them back after they were gone for like five years or something like that.
Yeah.
I I, it's 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 randomized.
Just random.
It's randomized. If we keep going to the same person every year, and here's another thing we'll do is, we'll sometimes send them to somebody, and the answer is, no, 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 no. Okay, well, that's not.
Yeah.
They're they're probably not going to be very helpful, let's pick somebody else, and let's maybe not include them next year. Right, because we, we, what we're trying to do is seek information, you know? And that's, but it, but it is a random process, we don't talk to everybody. But we might pick four or five employees within finance, and maybe in a different department. Alright, and then, again, management and end up, yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay. I want to, I want to jam through the rest of this, I feel like I've been up here for a while. But audit areas of emphasis, revenues and receivables, those are always an area of emphasis, are always a significant risk, and 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 that's actually a requirement by government auditing standards and generally accepted auditing standards. So that's always an emphasis. It's it it it's actually the 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 top, I would say, um, the top risk for financial statement fraud is going to be in recognition of revenue into various places. It's just say for, in a water fund, you may need to have a certain debt ratio, debt, you know, debt to revenue ratio, or something like that. Right? So the recognition of revenue is always a significant risk. Um, the city has a landfill that's currently, or currently getting ready for closure or post-closure. Right? That's a complicated, that there's, there's, there's one Gadsby pronouncement specific to that, and that's, that's, that's an area where there's a risk for some fraud if, say, an engineer is not adequately estimating the future costs. Right, because the future cost for closure, post-closure, then there's laws and rules over how much that has to be funded upfront. Right, so that's always a risk that there is um an adequate estimate. Net pension liability and O P E B liability, those are huge numbers, huge estimates. An actuary is hired, but there is risk, there is risk of management wanting to, let's say, um allocate contribution expenditures in, you know, in in certain areas and not in other areas. So we're always going to take a look at something like that. This year, what was once the Los Banos designated local authority became the Los Banos successor agency, so that's a brand-new fund. We needed to follow up on that, and even though it's a fiduciary fund, and not, it's not, it's not government resources, but it is a new fund, and we want to make sure that the integration of that into the city's trial balance was done correctly. And then finally, there was a federal award program in the, in the single audit. We put a lot of emphasis into that as well. So those were some of our, now, that doesn't mean that's all we looked at, we look at everything, we look at everything significant. Right, expenditures, revenues across the board, cash, cash is huge, cash doesn't reconcile, we got a big problem. Right, those, those are all givens. Now, what specifically are the risks that we want to do what we would call, like, special audit procedures for? Um, I already mentioned, we had no findings or question costs, um, and I, and I explained what a finding is, it's a control deficiency. And then last thing I want to, want to show everyone, if you have your financial statements in front of you, you don't have to open it up if you don't want. But page, starting on page four, there's about, let's say, eight to 10 pages, it's called a management discussion and analysis. There are 150 pages. Where do I start looking? How do I even know what matters? The first place I would start is the management discussion analysis, which is a summary by management, which we take a look at afterwards to make sure what they're saying is 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 correct, that really, it it described what happened that year from a financial perspective. Hey, there was a million-dollar change in this line item, why? Right? You can get a lot of information just from those 10 pages. On page 22, I'm not going to do a financial analysis, but just just, how how would a layman read financials in five minutes or less? We have a balance sheet, we have an income statement. A balance sheet is a snapshot of, it of the, it's a snapshot of the financial position of this fund at this moment in time. It's like someone took a picture at that moment in time, and that moment in time has to be, happens to be June 30 of 24. The income statement is a video that goes along with that snapshot. This is a story of how we got there this year. Okay? So quickly, what I'm looking at from a balance sheet is, what's my cash position and recent, current receivables position compared to our accounts payable? And in this situation, in 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 the city's case, they have about $46 million, $46 million of um, of assets, current assets, available to pay for $3 million of liabilities. What, okay, that's a, that sounds good right there, that's a good start, it's a good start. Cool. Now, when we go down to look at fund balance, we have a fund balance, that's generally your assets, liabilities, this is what's left over. I think in government, often, it's considered reserves. Right? There are 43, almost $44 million of fund balance in the general fund. Of that, about 8 million has been committed by council to be spent on specific projects, and another 13 million has been assigned by either council or management for projects as well, or certain types of expenditures. Meaning, there's a leftover unassigned fund balance of about $22 million, which is available for at minimum the following year's expenditures without consideration of future revenues. Great, now how do we get there? We're going to look on page 24. And we got our revenues, we got our expenditures, and we got some other stuff that I won't bore you with. And then we have third line from the bottom, net change in fund balance. So we had about 40 million, that's my alarm, to tell me to hurry up and get off stage. Just kidding, sorry about that. I told my phone, do not disturb, it didn't listen. Alright. Third line from the bottom, what's our net change in fund balance? This is a fancy government way of saying, what was my net income this year? Alright, it was about $3 million. Well, that's pretty good, right? Because if fund balance was going down, well, now we have to talk about, now we got some stuff to talk about. Finance directors get in there and say, hey, we're going the wrong direction, here's why. Right? Well, this went, this was going the correct direction, right? Our fund balance went up, we had net income, well, why? Right, is it because of operations, did we spend less than we thought we were? Or if you look about six lines down from the top, you see use of property and money. That's basically your interest and rent. The city had a really good year from um, from from a investment perspective. But you take that number out, and you had a balanced budget, basically. Your 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 revenues and expenditures were balanced for the year. Congratulations. That's how I read them, you can do that across the board. Um, so with that, nobody's sleeping yet, but I feel like half the people left, so I'm used to that. Alright. That that's going to conclude my presentation. Um, uh, any questions, concerns? Anything you want me to go back and look up, or at least ask Jasmine to, because she's the true expert? I'm happy to do it.
Any further questions? Yeah, we're okay too.
That's why I learned you talk enough and.
Okay, here, here he is.
Uh, first of all, I want to thank Josh for the presentation tonight.
Sure.
Minnie and Brent and Josh and I had a very long conversation yesterday about how do we put that presentation, which I think was outstanding, thank you very much for going into the detail that you did.
Appreciate it.
Um, I know that the audit process is important to this council, and our goal in that conversation with Josh was to deliver that message very clearly. And I think he did a fantastic job of explaining it.
Thank you.
I was a little worried at first, because when you get to the level of specificity and and smartness in the finance world, they talk about materialistic and controls and things like that.
Yeah.
And it keeps going over my head. Uh, and so I kept saying that, I'm so sorry, but I don't understand what you're saying. You got to break it down to like an eighth-grade level. And I just want to say thank you, because I think you did that very well.
Oh, great, thank you.
You explained it very well, you broke it down into terms that even I can understand.
Good.
Uh, so thank you for that. And then one last thank you is to Brent and Minnie and Rosemary and Sarah and all the finance staff, because they're every day following those control measures that we talk about. I have to approve requisitions or all of the expenditures above a certain amount of money physically, each one, I look at every single one of them. And so I just want to say thank you, because that was a really good presentation, I got to be honest, I was worried at first, but it was very good, Josh, so thank you very much.
I appreciate that, and just, you know, from from an outsider looking in, um, the, there has been turnover in in the city council, and it's, I think that those that have, that have continued the work and those that have stepped in have done a commendable job to keep um, the city's accounting moving forward. So that's, that's, yeah, that that, they should be proud of themselves, I can't be proud, because that would be, I didn't do the work. But, and I'm happy for them that they were able to do that. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you all, have a good night.
Anything else to add?
Just requesting, um, our recommendation is to adopt the resolution as presented.
Okay.
And I also want to thank Brent and staff and Rosemary and Sarah and and everybody in the city that makes sure and follows all these controls. And it takes the whole city to be able to put all those requisitions in and approvals and signing and wet ink and everything that our auditor requires, so I'm very appreciative of of that being already in place and just look forward to strengthening it even more.
Good, that sounds good. Okay, with that, we have a consideration of Resolution 6934.
Uh, Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 6934, accepting the 2324 fiscal audit report.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6934. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carried. Next item, item 11, is cancellation of a regular city council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, July 2nd, 2025, due to the July 4th holiday. And uh, who, anybody want to say anything about this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for considering this. This was just an opportunity to give staff and the team that puts in. This was just an opportunity to give staff and the team that puts in the work, along with you as well, to have a week off to enjoy the 4th of July holiday. It's on the Friday, and we know there's a lot of commitments, there's a lot of things that go on outside of this council. We have structured the agendas between now and after that to accommodate that. In the event that you have, you do approve this, we will be able to adjust very easily. If you don't, it's okay, we will mix things up and we'll get everything back to normal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, comments from the council?
I won't be at the following meeting, the July, over the next, I apologize, I will be at that one, it's the first one in August that I won't be there.
Okay. Okay. Louis, anything? Any, like, have the, a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, and second is to cancel the July 2nd, 2025 meeting. Any further questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. You mean there's life after the city? I don't think so. Okay, we'll move on, city departments report, and we'll start with our fire chief, Twala. Maybe you want to say something about fire station number three or number four?
We have a fire station four. We're still in the planning process, but talking with Chief Breezy, I still call you chief, sorry. We're working on trying to have a, a public information day regarding the fire station itself, so...
Maybe you could tell where that's located at and stuff like that?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's going to be located near the area behind Walmart. There's an area that we had, some land needed over to us, so we're already in the planning stages and coming up with a design and what our needs assessments were. So we have another meeting coming up here shortly with, with Banner in regards to that.
And it's also going to have an emergency?
It will have the emergency operations center, so we'll meet, we'll fulfill all of our requirements, plus there'll be some training components there for partial training grounds for some technical rescue at that location, which will meet our requirements that we had.
Maybe you could explain a little bit what an emergency operations center is.
So part of the emergency operations center is to, anytime that we have any event, such as like we had recently in 2022 with the large amount of flooding that happened in Merced County, county opened up their emergency operations center. It's not uncommon for cities to open up their local EOCs to, or EOC emergency operations center, to, to manage potential incidents that may occur, and their EOC is there to support what's happening with that incident. What's nice about this is having a newer facility here out in the west would be real helpful, not only for the county, but for the other cities here in the western part of Merced County.
Great, anything else?
No, fill the boot went well, as you can obviously see.
I thought you'd have your boot with you tonight.
Yeah, no kidding. The guys do this every year, they pre-plan it with county fires, they did an excellent job with that. And then, a couple weeks ago, we had our smoke detector event with, with Red Cross, which went well. Didn't have as big of turnout as prior years, but it was, it was a good event, so.
Good. Thank you very much. And we'll go to our public work director and city engineer, Berksen.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, only item I have was, we know there's a lot of work being done for Tegalita and Pioneer Road, some of the major workers coming down, that we're going to have to shut down the intersection all directions, so that's probably two weeks off, and we're going to provide adequate information in advance of detours around that. I know it's been a bit of a barrier to get through, or obstacle to get through currently, but we're making pro, we're, we're on target with, with the project, but the full shutdown is going to happen for probably about two, three weeks from now.
And when it will be completed?
The project, they have a year to complete, but they'll be done before the end of the year.
So the street opening, though?
The street opening would be, um, the end of, end of June.
Great. Communities and economic development directors, Zales.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. So I do have a public hearing for a site plan review. This is for the permanent supportive housing project with, that we're using our encampment resolution fund grant and our alliance grant for. This is a site plan review public hearing for the development of 58 residential units. It'll consist of an office, a game room, a laundry building, community center with associated site improvements. The developer is Anabasis LLC. It's going to be located off of Gilbert Gonzalez Drive. The public hearing will be held on Wednesday, May 28th at 6:00 PM. I also wanted to report that staff this week attended the ICSC Retail Convention. ICSC is the International Council of Shopping Centers Retail Convention. It was held in Las Vegas. This, well, we do attend every year, really just to put Los Banis on the map, but what we do is we meet with developers, brokers, and retailers to talk and attract those retailers to Los Banis. We let them know what opportunities we have, we talk about potential sites. And this trip, I did bring my assistant planner, Justin Ragganton, along, and we had a very fruitful trip, which we should be seeing some, some fruits of that labor in the next couple of years. These are deals that are in the process of being made, and just past trips that we've taken, the fruits of that have been Ross, Marshalls, Chipotle, Dutch, Dutch Number Two, because of those relationships with Dutch, just to name the ones off the top of my head. And then I also want to report, which will be at the end of the adjournment of this agenda, is that we will be holding a joint planning commission and city council meeting on May 29th at 5:00 PM at the community center in the lounge regarding the community design standards. We've been working on that for several years now, and we're soliciting feedback and comments from the planning commission and the city council, and to be able to incorporate any of that feedback that we receive into a final, the final document, and then we'll go into public hearings with the planning commission and city council after July. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Is there any completion dates on the new Dutch Brothers and Hawaiian barbecue? Do you have a roundabout date?
Yeah, so on Dutch, they're moving very quickly. We're anticipating probably in the next 60 days, and I'll, I'll say maybe even 90, let's go 60 to 90 days, but they are moving very quickly. I think they're already painting the building, so that's exciting. And then Ono will take probably a little bit longer, they're just a little behind, more so than the Dutch Bros. I think Dutch just has that concept down, so down-packed. So, I would anticipate that that will probably be sometime in late summer, early fall, that maybe Ono Hawaiian barbecue will be open.
Great, thank you for your report. Finance director, Marano.
I have a question while she's still on the agenda. Has there been a new sandwich shop that's opened up here in Los Banos over by AAA?
Yeah, it, it actually opened now maybe six months ago, Sour Dough &amp; Co. I look at Joe like he would know. But I, I do believe it was probably closer to the beginning of the school year when I saw, when I attended, you know, the first couple of weeks, they did not have a grand opening or a ribbon cutting ceremony. It was kind of a soft opening, but I do recall that that was probably about September, October-ish, that they, that they were open.
Thank you.
Okay, finance director, Marano.
So I'm very happy to report that credit cards are now being accepted at all of our locations, and so we're ahead of the July 1st deadline that I had. So, very happy that we're up and running in the departments, in those locations that didn't have credit cards. And then we're going to, we're working with community development and with Parks and Recreation to integrate Tyler to our system, so they will be able to do that also, so very excited.
Very good, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to our parks and rec, director, Joe.
Thank you. I have a couple of parks updates. So Sunrise Ranch, we opened last Wednesday, a soft opening. We call it soft just because we're still waiting on some PGI items relating to the lighting there, but just very excited. I've stopped by about four of the nights since, and it's like there's 30 kids running all over, it's just a great scene, so do encourage you to check it out, it's on 2053 Martin Street. You also see quite a bit of movement starting out at Shaughnessy Village, they started putting the root barriers in, some of the grading, so you'll see that escalate from here. You also see some shade structures continuing on, we did some kind of in the earlier spring, and we're, we're getting back to that. Regency Lot D, Olivera, Ranch de los Amigos are going to be the next three coming in. Regency is under construction right now. We just built the playground there as well. And then the last thing is, I'd just like to thank the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, for attending the ceremonial check at Colorado Ballpark. It was a little windy, but we made it through, and it was, I really appreciate it. Yeah, Assemblymember Soria's support, so thank you.
Yeah, it was real nice seeing Assemblywoman Soria there, gave me this a million dollars, that was pretty good. Thank you, Joe, for organizing all that. Police chief, Ray Rena, Ray?
Got to come up here, I'm not as cool as the rest of them.
You don't get a mic over there.
It's true. Good evening, mayor, council. Just quick items, number one, there have been a lot of comments in person and online regarding the incident at G Street last Thursday, although I can't go into very many details or, there's, some comments I cannot make, just want to acknowledge the police department did respond on Thursday, along with fire personnel. We have been monitoring the progress of the woman who was injured, happy to report, it sounds like she is recovering, and so that's good. Also, it sounds like our information suggests that there is a bed available for her at a respite facility in Merced, when she's ready, and when her care professionals feel she's ready. So our thoughts and prayers continue to be with her, in addition to the staff who were working on Thursday as well and were affected. We'll be out there tomorrow picking up trash, so you'll see us out there tomorrow. And so, that's, that's that. Second thing, real quick, just acknowledging, last week was National Police Week, so I just want to take a moment to acknowledge all the law enforcement officers, past, present, who have decided to take on this career, this noble career, this way of life. So it's something that we're very proud of in the profession, and I'm very proud of the staff at the police department in particular, for what they do, and for choosing to serve in the city of Los Banos. Thank you, mayor.
Agreed with that. Thank you very much, chief. Go on to our city managers' report, Gary Breezy.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We've heard some comments about having a homeless workshop. I think what we'll do is, back on May 6th, we did a public priorities workshop with the council at the police department. We provided, staff provided a very lengthy, very lengthy, and very detailed presentation on our homelessness issue in our community, it was open to the public. What I think I'll do is ask staff to just, in some form or fashion, replay that in the form of a workshop with the community here, coming up with Kristi and her staff. It was very informative, we went into great detail about the homeless issue in our community, some of the attempts that we're trying to make to reduce that. And I, we, I think, I won't speak for the council, but I will, and say that we're all very, it's, it's a priority to this community, for sure. And I, I'll leave it at that, and let the council say their, their words about it if they choose to, but we will have a homeless workshop at some point in time, probably next month, I say, because we're, what, on the 21st, yeah, in June? I'll commit to that and say that we're going to have one. I think we can pull that off very easily. To talk a little bit, Ann, about what you mentioned, about the governor's change and how he's wanting to close encampments. He does, he does want to close encampments, he's infused $3.3 billion, give or take, of funding into the state of California. Our housing staff, which by the way, the city of Los Banis is the only city in the county to have housing and homeless dedicated, housing and homeless program dedicated staff to just this project. No other communities do. So, I'm very proud of the council and the staff that we have for acknowledging that and seeing that as the priority as it is. Going back to that $3.3 billion, unfortunately, staff has reviewed it, and it does not look like any of that funding will be on the west side of the county. There will be, I'm going to say about $2 million, $2.5 million invested into programs on the east side of the county, and you can bet that our homeless, our housing staff will be finding a way to use some of those dollars to get some of our folks into those programs if we can. Unfortunately, none of that dollar is coming our way. I will say, though, and Stacy just mentioned it a few moments ago, on May 28th, our housing program, One Tree is Going, before the planning commission, it's on schedule, Stacy, Kristi, and the team are working very hard to keep it on schedule to get that up and running, because the moment it's open, 58 of those 70 to 80 people that are out on G Street will be moved into one of those locations. So, and then in regards to the mayor's, sorry, mayor, the governor's language on closing encampments, the one thing that I'm going to bring up is that, yes, he is going around saying that we need to close encampments, but the literature that he speaks of, when he talks about model ordinances and some of the other things in regards to closing those encampments, he still recommends, and I'm going to, I'm just going to quote it here, it's recommended that a local government ensure that there are reasonably accessible locations within the jurisdiction where a person may lawfully sleep before you close an encampment. So we're trying to stay in cooperation with the guidance from the governor's office, I can tell you it's a priority. I'm sure we will hear from the council in the days to come about the encampment and homelessness in general, by way of the budget and other processes. I just wanted to say that we're trying to work as hard as we can and as diligently as we can to affect change out there, and you're going to see more things come as time goes on. I will say, though, you mentioned the, the idea of finding feces around in the downtown area. We have bathrooms at our encampment now, and if we close that encampment, those bathrooms will go away, and so that's a difficulty that we have to deal with. Those people won't magically disappear when we close that encampment, and so that's, that's something that we have to contend with. We talked about it a little bit, the chief, Twala did, the fire department and the EOC, we plan on bringing a community workshop together to present those ideas to the community, and then we'll take those comments back to you at council, where we will have a conversation with council about both fire station number four and the EOC, as well as, what we hope to be soon in progress, the development designs, design, oh my goodness, the Development Services Center, as well as the civic, civic master plan, which includes the old police annex, as well as the old police department building and the two properties to the west of that. That's exciting, because that's going to be remodeling and potentially reconstruction and demolition, or whatever that may come of that across the street, but that's going to uplift and upgrade the downtown even more, so we're excited to bring those to you here soon, hopefully June and July. You know, the, the one thing I'll continue to say is that my email is at the top of the city's homepage. If you have a question about homelessness or anything else that goes on in this community and you want an answer, I'm tied to my emails 24/7, just about, and I'm happy to reply with the information that I can. Please email me at gary.breezy@losbanos.org if you have a question about homelessness, or why we're doing what we're doing, or something else along those lines. We want to be as transparent as we can be, we've said that from the beginning, and we'll continue to do that. Improvement standards, Stacy's working on the design standards, my last comment, the public works department will have a improvement standard, which is the more technical and functional aspect of our city's infrastructure. We'll have a workshop on that come July. So we're planning that now, and we intend to bring that forward after the design standards gets a little bit further down the road. And I apologize for taking so much time, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that's all I have for tonight.
One more thing.
Yes?
Give us update on the portables in the parking lot.
Yeah, we were just talking about that today, we have made the proper notifications, we will, we have, we are terminating the contract, we will not be paying any longer than we absolutely have to. I made a phone call today, because we are having a little bit of a communication issue with the company. The last communication Stacy had with them is that they are in the planning process of removing those portables, so we know that they're working on it. I called today just to get an update, because we haven't heard from them in a week or so, and that's too long to go without communication, and so I'm waiting for a call back from that company, but we are continuing to bug them, and the goal is to get those removed as quickly as possible, and we'll take some other... as possible. And we'll take some other steps if we have to to get those removed. But I can promise you, we're going to, we're working on that behind the scenes.
So what is the last date of payment to them for those portables?
I think by contract, we are through the end of June to pay for those.
Okay, so they can basically kind of let those trailers sit there until the end of June if they want to. Or can we put them someplace else like maybe over in the Public Works yard so that we can start moving and getting our parking lot back in order?
Yeah, we've had conversations internally about that idea. And I think the juice of moving those probably would be worth the squeeze because it would take such an effort to get rid of those. I understand wanting to do that and I suppose at some point we can do that. But we're hoping for us to get voluntary compliance, if you will, with the company to come pick them up before that time. But it is certainly, all options are on the table. Stacy and I were talking today about an option that I won't say at the dais, but we're considering all options to motivate that company to come get their portables.
Talk to Ann about Caltrans discussion, Caltrans and the intersection you had about three weeks ago, intersection of 165, 152, about the timing of the lights. Because one of her comments besides the left turning lane was that it seems like the lights are off, only three cars. Remember you contacted Caltrans? Because I had that, someone else actually brought that to my attention.
Yeah, so we are in fairly regular communication with Caltrans on 152 lighting issues. I have the same issue with the turning movements and the northbound movements. The problem is, Ann, a lot of those lights are phased in sequence. And so if we were to move the timing of the northbound Mercy Springs lights on the turn signal side, on the left turn side, we're going to have to affect change on the other ones. And so we delay, every time you make a move and there's an intended or an unintended consequence on the other side of that, the opposing side. So it's a little bit more complicated than you think. I agree with you. We should be able to move traffic a little bit more efficiently. But the moment you change the cycle in one direction, you have to change the cycle in another direction and it causes delays. And so for the example of the left turn movement for you or in that example, you're going to have to cause a delay for the southbound traffic on Mercy Springs crossing the highway and potentially even the left turn lane, just dependent upon how that all phases out. So I'm more than happy to have a conversation with our contacts at District 10. I just know from experience, if you try and adjust one side of it, you got to adjust the other side to compensate for it. And so the people going southbound will now be upset at the fact that we changed it.
But I think it's changed. It's something, because I saw only three cars turn.
She's referring to...
Yeah.
Yeah, so they do different phasing. They'll sometimes run the left turn sequence and the northbound at the same time. And then sometimes they only do the left turning movement. So southbound left turn, northbound, they turn at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And we'll go with our council member report. Mayor Pro Tem, Deborah Lewis, District 4.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I didn't attend an Airborne meeting because we were in DC for One Voice. So I don't have a report on that. However, I do know that, again, in this Fourth of July season, that the Airborne is pushing emphatically to have cities pass ordinances to no longer have live fireworks, that we begin to move into drone shows. That's the reason why last year as well as this year, they gave grant money to cities in order to have drone shows. The grant was, the first year grant, it was $25,000. This year it was $10,000. I gave that information to Downtown Association. I checked on the application today and they had not submitted an application. And the date has closed already and all the funding is gone. So with that being said, I don't know how soon CARBS is going to push in California, especially in light of all the fires we've had, to no longer have live fireworks anymore. Just this Saturday, as it was indicated, we had, you know, I don't know, the gust of winds could have been, what, 35, 40 miles an hour, fire up near the dam and the city was filled with smoke. We just don't know what the wind factor is going to be here in Los Banos at any time. And especially during the summer, it could pick up, which would put the chief in the position of having to cancel a fireworks show and then that money is lost. So I would encourage the council to think about, you know, and I'm certainly in favor of moving our city to a live firework, move it away from a live fireworks show and move it to a drone show so that that gives us that extra safety precaution for the city of Los Banos. For One Voice in DC, first of all, the National Police Officers' Week was celebrated back in DC. We didn't get a chance to observe any of that. But one of the member's wife came and walked around the city and was able to see activities and a lot of antique police cars were brought out, a lot of celebration. And to, I sent the chief a snapshot of a thank you to the department, the police departments throughout the United States. And so it was a very large celebration. There were police officers everywhere. It was just nice to see that kind of camaraderie going on. And I hope at some point, maybe one year, we could send our chief and, you know, maybe a couple of commanders or officers back to that celebration to allow them to enjoy, you know, the camaraderie of police officers from all over the United States, whether it's in forestry, whatever, you know, just law enforcement period. It's a big celebration in DC at that time. While we were back there, you know, my area of charge was for COPS grants and SAFER grants for our Fire Department. We met with our congressman, Adam and Gray. We met with Schiff and one other assembly person was not available even though they were on schedule. And I think Adam Gray is pretty astute to what our needs are here in the Merced County area. But one of the things that became evident to all of us is how the federal government has in the past judged the grants that are handed out regardless of where they are. But specifically for, through FEMA and through COPS grants and SAFER grants and the Department of Justice is that they look at the demographics back east and there are states that are the size of Merced County. And within those states, there are cities that they consider small cities that are maybe 5,000, 6,000 people. But by California standards, our city is considered a small city. And so that was one of the things that we tried to push with the agencies to, and especially one agency we met with that was a person that was like a right-hand person, for lack of words, to the president about changing, recommending that Congress look at changing ordinances so that California is looked at differently than the east coast and some of these smaller states and smaller cities. Because we'll never get anything if we're judged by one standard. It just, there's no one standard that fits all when it comes to California. So that there are, the COPS grants, I think, started Thursday of last week. And there were some recommendations that the chief had suggested that I bring before them. And they understood and accepted the recommendations and they will pass them down. Hopefully there'll be some changes as to the length of the grants and the amount of money that's funded to the grants. The same for SAFER. FEMA is a little bit in a flux right now. So it was kind of hard for them to hear us and what our requests were because they were concerned about whether they were going to still be around or have a job. But I left some good lead backs for them to remember us by. And I do plan, Mayor, on writing some letters and making contact with the people that we had appointments with so that Los Banos can stay before them. And when our staff makes contact with them, it's just kind of an additional window opening for them.
Right, yep.
I know that, you know, there was some concern about we here at the local level and what we're doing and what we're not doing. And we need to be more effective. But the one thing I want to share with the public, just as it is at the national level, Congress makes the laws. And here and in the state of California, it's the Assembly and our Senate that make the laws. In the state of California, when it comes to mental health treatment, housing and all that stuff, that's money that should be trickled down from the state to the county because it's their charge and their responsibility. And some of the feeds that I receive from counties and from cities, there is a pushback, you know, on the edict that has come down from the governor because there's just not enough money. And they're putting the pressure on cities and counties to make these effective changes and they're not sending down enough money to do it. San Diego was one that I read today that's pushing back. And I think that in order for this to be effective, number one, as I've always said, people who are mentally ill by drugs, alcohol, or any other type of mental illness need to be treated. You can't just put people in a building, in a house, in an apartment and expect that their mental illness is going to go away. That doesn't work. So, you know, I would suggest that if you have concerns as a public resident, as a constituent of your federal electeds and your state electeds, they kind of listen to the public because you are the ones that elect them. And I think we've all heard it, that when the pressure's on, and especially at the federal level, when constituents are contacting their representatives because they don't like something, they're tuning changes. So we don't have that control at the local level. People need to contact their assembly person and their state senator about monies and things that are coming down to their districts and cities. So that's what I want to encourage you to do, is not put all the blame on us. Yes, you know, we can incur some of the blame, the encampment of where it is. I did not agree with that when it was put there. It's prime property for our city and it's become a disruptive challenge for the city of Los Banos. So that's my recommendation to our residents, our voting constituents in Los Banos is please contact your Assembly and your state senator and your congressman, your representative for Congress and your state senators, whether they agree with you or not. You need to contact them and let them know that we need financial help here in California to deal with this. But we also need treatment. And until the electeds in Sacramento understand that people who are mentally ill need treatment, I don't know how this whole homeless thing is going to be resolved. And it's been mentioned about the million dollar check that our assembly woman gave us. And it was a good event outside of the wind. There was also another event this past Saturday and it was the Relay for Life. It was a 24-hour ordeal. And I think, you know, I could hear it. I think it was a successful event. It was held over at the junior high school, Creekside, Creekside Junior High School. So we had several events going on this weekend and it was a good event. I can still hear them in the middle of the night with that event from my house. So I know that they were having a good time. I would like to request through our city manager is to have Public Works bring forth a report of what, you know, we get emails from our city clerk about what streets are being closed for various reasons. But I'd like to see a report about what streets are on the loom for repair or either resurfacing for the upcoming six months. Because I do have people asking me about it. I know in the Anderson Homes, Anderson 5, those streets are just broken up completely and falling apart. So I would like to see a report come to council in regards to repairs that are scheduled in the next six months in the city of Los Banos. And I think, I think that's pretty much it that I have for this evening. Thank you.
I'm going to piggyback a little bit on the presentation of the check. So 40 mile an hour winds, but the issue was the 30 12-year-olds kicking the dirt behind us.
Yeah.
And sand blasting the back of us. It was quite a sight. Okay, let's see. Councilmember Evan Sanders, District Number 2.
I was going to say, I'm sorry I missed the Colorado Ballpark thing. I think I'm not as much anymore.
I had sand in my ears and everything.
Backcountry permanent for Yosemite, so I was walking around the backcountry. Mr. Fulton, thank you for this. I really appreciate you coming to council and giving us basically a list of action items. I commuted on motorcycle and bicycle for a lot of years, so I'm pretty aware of storm drains going in the wrong direction, how bad they are. Gary, maybe we can see if Public Works can look into some of this stuff. Reading this, it looks like some of it's pretty straightforward. Right, right. No, I get you. Yeah, I commuted on a bicycle for quite a few years when I lived in the area also. So I get it. There's stuff on the street that in a car you don't realize are really bad for motorcycles and bicycles. All right, thank you. I appreciate it. I had somebody ask me about the mobile vendor ordinance and why we aren't talking about it again tonight. So I just want to really say real quick that there's a lot happening behind the scenes. Changing an ordinance takes time and for very good reason. I know that staff is working on it, evaluating everything, licensing fees, what kind of activities and amenities should be allowed. I'm looking forward to a solution that strikes the right balance between city oversight and giving our mobile vendors the best chance to thrive in Los Banos. The big thing I want to talk about is the homeless encampment. I'm still pretty new to city government and I'll be honest, I'm not entirely sure what the best way to talk about a complex issue like this is. What I do know is that despite our best efforts, the situation at the encampment is untenable. Last week, a woman was injured. My heart goes out to her. I hope she recovers quickly. But the incident really drove home the need for us to step back and look comprehensively at how we're managing the encampment because something has to change. We need to find a safer, more efficient way forward that protects both the residents living there and the staff that work to maintain the site. To be clear, I know that the challenges that we're facing are not from a lack of effort. City staff, under the guidance of our city manager, worked really hard to keep the site safe and sanitary. It seems like we're constantly adding more things and doing more things to try to make it better. Sanitation, outreach, health services. But despite this, it's still the same recurring issues, fire, trash buildup, crime, structures that look way too permanent for anything that was intended to be on the site. I think what makes it harder is that the encampment was originally established with no long-term plan, no clear purpose and no definition of what it should or shouldn't be. There's no shared understanding of how long it should exist, what's allowed, or what the ultimate goal is. It's difficult to measure success if you haven't defined what it looks like. And that's where we need to start, by defining what the encampment is, what it isn't. And only then can we develop a plan on how to manage it successfully. I understand that nobody wants the encampment, but the alternative of allowing people to scatter throughout the city is not something we can accept either. That was allowed to happen once before and it came with a whole other set of consequences. We need a more intentional and structured approach. I know Governor Newsom introduced some model ordinances. Gary talked about that. It gives us a framework, but there's a lot of issues with that as well. But I think there are some tools that we can use to help mitigate the problems that we have. It does open the door to more sustainable management options. I have a lot of ideas around this, but I'm not an expert and we need the right people to take. at the table. Whatever we do has to legally sound practically enforceable and shaped with input from experts, stakeholders, and staff. It sounds like Gary's already got a plan to do a community workshop, which is awesome. That's pretty much what I was going to ask for, but we need to define the encampment. We need to set realistic goals and timelines, and we need to move forward. I think it needs to be a priority over just about everything else that's going on.
Very well said. So Marcus Chavez is absent tonight, so we'll move on, and I totally agree with you, it's time. We've tried everything, and I... There has to be law and order in this city, and I drive by that place every day, just like that, and I know I've talked about being at the fair, and it's on everybody's mind. I mean, it's, "Hi, how are you? What are you doing about the encampment?" And I don't blame anybody, because it's, something has to be done. I know a plan is in the works, but it has to be done fast, and this has to get done. There's no more, and we can't help, unfortunately, we have to take things in our own hands, because Governor and the government's not helping us. And like Gary said, he writes, goes out and says, "We're going to close all the encampments, but you still have to have someplace for them to go." And he doesn't say that in his speech, but... So anyway, very well said, Evan, and I know we all feel the same, including staff. So a little bit about John, thanks for the bike lanes. He's talked to me before about it. I'm in favor of fixing those things. I do want to say that Caltrans new design, they've moved up, I don't know if you've seen them, sort of slowed down now, but about two weeks ago, they were, Caltrans was surveying 152 like crazy, because they've moved up the funding for the 152, from redoing 152 from Santa Fe grade to, I think it's almost Volta. And that was going to be like a year and a half away. Well, the Caltrans board, what's that board called? Yeah, CTC, told them that that money had to be used in this, at this time. So that got moved up in that, our bike lanes. And I haven't seen the final plan yet, but I think there's bike lanes all through 152 through town, right? So there's bike lane being added to 152 standardized in today's designs that are compliant with today's standards. So that's good news, but there's a lot more that has to be done, I realized, around the city. Yeah, definitely the college needs help getting people, yeah. Yeah, so we're working on walking and bike lanes to the college, so it's safe for the students to get out to Merced College. Also, last week on, let's see, the 15th, I had LAFCO meeting, that's Local Agency Formation Committee. I've explained it in the past, I'll just say it's a committee that is a separate committee from any government agency, but it's built by, I'm on the board, there's county supervisors on the board, our supervisor, Scott Silveira's on the board, there's people at large on the board, and they okay annexations throughout all the cities. They also expand water districts, special districts, cemetery districts. Cemetery wants to expand, it all approved through LAFCO. So right now, we're in the LAFCO, we're in the middle, we just okayed the budget, it's a little bit less than $250,000. They don't spend a lot of money for that agency, but it's pretty much when work comes, the agency that's requesting the work, like the city's going to do something, if the city's going to annex something, city pays for that process at LAFCO to get a check and get it approved. So anyway, we had a good meeting last, on the 15th. On this coming Monday is Memorial Day at our local cemetery at 10:00 AM. I invite everybody to come and honor our veterans, especially the fallen veterans. Our VFW and American Legion will be there. Also on Sunday is the memorial celebration at the cemetery in San Anella, and that's at 9:00 AM. So I recommend everybody being at those two. I'm going to ask Chief Reyna to send to his traffic committee to look at limited parking on Sixth Street between K and H. I had a meeting with a bunch of merchants that have businesses on Sixth Street. Got there a little early, I walked up and down Sixth Street, and didn't see a lot of customers, it was right before 5:00. I didn't see a lot of customers in the different businesses, but there was no place to park. And I know we've had a lot of complaints that employees are parking on Sixth Street, and if you want to go to the eye doctor, if you want to go to another shop downtown, you cannot find a place to park. So I know in the 50s, they had meters on Sixth Street. On the 60s and 70s, we had a meter made, and now there's AI. So you can put a camera on, I just looked at all of you, put a camera every half block that keeps track of how long cars stay there, and it'll send a ticket in the mail with zero involvement by personnel. So there's that stuff. Now, I'm not saying that's the answer, but there's a lot of things. I know we don't have a traffic division right now, we're working on that, but I think something has to be done. Two-hour limit of parking gives everybody plenty of time to get a haircut or do their yoga, whatever they do down there, and yet, and I know the merchants have tried to ask employees not to park on Sixth Street, and it's sort of gotten a little confrontational lately, so we don't want that to go on. So if you can bring that to your traffic committee, I'd appreciate it for study. And we talked about the bike lanes, and... Let's see. I think that's all I have. So we're going to be going into closed session, and in closed session, we'll be discussing public employee release, it's CalPERS industrial disability retirement pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. If any decision is made in closed session, we'll be coming out here in the public and taking a vote in the public. So with that, we are... And then we'll be adjourning to 5:00 PM on Thursday, May 29th, at the Los Manos Community Center, after we come back in closed session, at 6:45 Seventh Street, to hold a joint meeting with the Planning Commission to discuss community design standards, and everybody's welcome to that. When I was mayor, the first time, we had a lot of those, and I remember when we did the design standards for downtown, I think we had 200 people there. It was amazing that we had to hold it at the fairgrounds, because we didn't have a building that could hold that back then. So anyway, we invite people to come out, give us your opinion on design standards, and we need everybody's opinion. We need everybody to be involved in our community. So with that, we're going into closed sessions. Thank you. Okay, we are back from closed session, and the closed session was public employee release, CalPERS industrial disability retirement pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. And with that, we have Resolution Number 6935. Do we have a resolution to read? Thank you. Have to read all this thing?
Just the title.
Okay, Resolution 6935, a resolution of the City Council, the City of Los Manos, on application for industrial disability retirement pursuant to Government Code Section And with this, we will send it to the City Council for discussion or a motion.
No discussion, Mayor. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6935 as read by title.
We have a motion and second for Resolution 6935 as stated. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, ayes have it. And we are adjourning to 5:00 PM on May 29th at the Community Center for a joint meeting with the Planning Commission to discuss community design standards. This meeting is adjourned until May 29th. Thank you.